Are we ready?
No.
Oh, this clock's right now?
Yes.
The only thing is be better.
That does help.
That'd be good.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, all of you again. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Make a motion to.
Sir.
Go ahead.
Sir.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey, do we have any public comments here?
Uh, yes, one. Lori White. Lori? Thank you. So my name is Lori White and I live on the north side of the railroad tracks. Next week I will attend the city council meeting and present a request for the city to take steps to improve the track crossing safety for the residents of Quincy with emphasis on the students who cross through the rail yard to then cross the tracks to go to and from Quincy Middle School and in some cases ancient lakes elementary school. I don't know if many of you are aware, but there are students that do that on a daily basis. They don't go down to third to cross. They just walk through the rail yards and it's really incredibly unsafe. And I'd like the city to initiate a feasibility study on how that can be resolved on a good, in a good fashion, like a possible overpass for vehicles to the students. It affects the whole community. It affects students during the school year, but also children during the summer months when they go back and forth for recreation from north to south. And it affects students on school buses. The school buses all have to stop for a long period of time before they cross the tracks. So I'm just here tonight. I share this petition with the school board and I'll leave a copy of it. And if you feel so inclined to add your name to this petition, that would be great. More voices, the better to the city council. And again, I will be presenting this to the city council next week. I have talked to the city manager and many other people in Quincy about this issue and like to see something. Then on the interim, in the interim, and also long term that enhances our community and safety with these real cars.
Great. Yeah, are we allowed to?
You can on your own as a individual citizen.
As a individual?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the consent of the agenda, does anyone have questions about those things on the agenda? I have a few. I just didn't have time to email you. Sorry.
You're welcome. To your best.
What is the school district policy service for?
The policy service, uh, that is a service that we've been using for years to help us get our policy books up to date. So when they come in from Wasta, you see all the work on Edge Portal. We work with actually a partnership intended for Dickerson houses with all of those to make sure that when the board approves them that they go online and he puts the tables together for us.
So do we have policies that have done this? Cause I haven't seen any of those that I'm aware.
He just takes what the board has approved from Wasta and then puts them on our website for us. Just the backend table. Absolutely. Yeah. Nothing comes out of his service.
Okay. Um, I also had a question on the payroll account. I had told you my concern about a lack of pairs, but I am kind of astonished at what we pay them because it seems to be very minimal. And then there's some that make more than twice as much.
Some parent educators, you mean?
Uh huh. I was kind of wanting to know why. What is the difference in these pairs?
So yeah, that's a great question. So we have different levels of pairs or para one starting parent educator, they're making roughly twenty forty-four an hour. That's just coming in, no experience. They either have to pass a parent test or they have to have at least, I think seventy-four credits. Seventy-two, seventy-two credits or seventy-two college credits. And that qualifies them to be a parent one. To be a parent two, our parent twos, they generally work with our students in life skills program. So they have other duties such as catheterization. They might change diapers. They have a little bit higher level of training than a parent one does typically. And then a little bit more responsibility because they're working with medically fragile children as well in the life skills room. Then parent three generally has a much higher level of training, such as specialized behavior training. And they work with our students who have have some behavior challenges. So those are the three different levels that we have.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is I really feel we are lacking in parent after the incident I told you about or shared with you. I think they're a great asset to most of our teachers, but we, I feel we need to find a way to get them some better money. And the one maybe a little better treatment. The one I shared a long time ago with you, but I just think it's something that we as a board need to be able to discuss and get taken care of.
Um, so what governs that is our, you know, we have talked about it, is the pre-year bargain contract
Right.
that we have um, that the parent association, public education association, they agreed to. So that that is a rate and we do every time we bargain, we do look at where our rates set and you know, DJ, you could speak to this. Last time we bargained, it was right in the top third of comparable districts or size. So the, with the raise that we gave them, we can give pairs more than the other classifications because we did want to get their payout. Cause we did recognize that they were, you know, that they should have been compensated a little bit higher rate. And that's, that was how we came to the agreement that we had and that agreement expires in 2026. So that's currently what we're locked into.
Okay.
And we're budgeted for these rates specifically.
Yeah, I know also that we needed to give Windermere an extension. I thought we sold that building or do we still have more property?
We have one more property to sell. Uh, it's the old district office is still for sale. So anybody wants the old district office.
Okay.
It's priced as well.
Also in the leadership retreat, they don't have accommodations. Are they staying in a school building because it's a retreat?
For the high school, uh, for that is Colleen's.
Yeah, no, um, they are staying in a hotel. Yeah.
But it says on the path or the request.
The clarification is confusing for everybody in Cleveland. It's we don't have to make accommodations for them. The school is making that. When it says, do they need accommodation that accused that 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 cues a district office that someone here is going to make accommodations for them?
Okay.
With with most schools, because back, you know, several years ago, we had one person doing a lot of the bookings here. Now all the buildings do their own bookings.
I see.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. But that is, that is, that is a confusing line there for sure.
Cause I keep finding it and I'm thinking, why? We're gonna be gone two, three days, a week, and I think, okay.
Yeah, but um, uh, the student along with the student from the big picture learning and twist and um, another one from to now are going to get to be representatives at this national big picture leadership conference. It's really, really cool.
Are they going to Colorado?
Yes, and it paid for out of our master base learning grant. So they're really fortunate to have that opportunity.
Okay. Okay, sorry. One more thing. Um, out of endorsement teachings, uh, it seemed like some of these endorsements are big leaps. You feel comfortable with that?
We do, because a lot of these people have been teaching in these, this area for, for years. Some, um, you know, for example, so like for an example, Derwin, he has a, a teaching endorsement in math, but he doesn't have it for the steam portion of his day that he has to take. So he is fully credential. He just doesn't have that stem piece. Same thing.
What about the music one? Um, why didn't she just go to the music job?
So the music, the, the focus is for special education. Because we have opened up that position up multiple times and it's really hard to find highly qualified elementary teachers. So, and she's been in that role now for four years, three years?
Four, I think.
So we've opened up and tried to find qualified replacements for that and it's, it's really challenging. So she continues to be in that.
They're right where they're working towards some sort of.
They, they have generally have to be working towards that endorsement.
If they're teaching that.
If they're teaching that particular subject or having an action plan here on file at the district that they are working for.
Okay. And then on that, there was the one, two and three statement. Any such teachers, so I mutually develop written plan. Oh, who is doing the planning for this teacher that?
So they will sit down with the building administrator and together will come up with a plan.
I see.
And then that gets filed at the district office.
Okay. And they will not be subject to non-renewal probation based on their evaluation of teaching effectively? Number two.
Yes, and they're out of endorsement areas based in their content areas, but the non-renewal probation piece that doesn't prohibit us from opening that position up every year and seeking highly, highly qualified.
I see. Okay. For three. There's no comment for that one. Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion to adopt the agenda or is there any other questions?
Sure.
Just want to acknowledge that the enrollment numbers, the title heads, thank you for adding that. It makes a lot more sense. Um, just one thing, just to make sure I understand every time I read it, the yellow um, column versus the gray at the very end, does that mean like what we have, I guess, what's, what's the difference?
That's a great question. So FTE is full-time enrollment. So full-time, so what is their, their, the, the actual minutes they're spending in a Quincy school district seat? And that's what we're funded, funded for. The head count, the one sixteen or head count, that's literally the whites of their eyes. That's how many students we're serving. So the FTE, that's what our enrollment is based on.
The yellow.
The yellow, correct. So our secretary is monthly, you know, the assistant and then Tia verifies, they calculate to the minute our students are spending in their seats and then that drives OSPI funding. So it's, it's a, it's a really important process. But that's the distinction.
So that would fluctuate if a student's absent?
No, no, not at all. It's, it's really, it's, it will fluctuate if the student unrolls. So we get, I think, what is it, twenty days? How many days?
Yeah, twenty days.
So the twenty-first day, we would withdraw that suit.
Suspension, that's not affected at all?
Nope. And for programs like running start, and running start too, it's a twenty-two.
Well, I'm sure that's your flag to hear about. What about like the students in Q Y A?
Yeah.
Time measured.
So what happens is sometimes it depends on which program and what their specific schedule is. But some of our students are, for example, serve part of the time in open doors that will, that will mess with our FTE and headcount being different. Or what impacts us a lot is we encourage our kids to take elective classes at the high school or CTE classes. So in that case, point whatever of their day is actually a high school um, FTE, but they're on our headcount because they're with us for the majority of the day. So those two numbers don't always match because we share our kids with other entities that are claiming a portion of that FTE for the part that they're serving, our kids.
Thank you. Um, and then my final question was just related to the school accreditation. I haven't seen something on that before. So I'm just curious, what is it? What's? The purpose?
So the purpose really it's, it's, it will, the, the final uh, step is we, the A C D board will give our high school accreditation. And where that comes into play is when students are applying for scholarships. Depending on the certain classes that we have within a class, whether it's dual credit college and high school, AP, so does it meet a rigorous standard for our students? So um, if they go apply to certain universities, they'll look for that accreditation because then that accor- that accreditation, that accreditation guarantees that the students have rigorous experience through the courses that this company or this group A C D has, has analyzed. Uh, they have to submit their full improvement plan, their improvement plans based on their needs assessment, which is rooted in data. And then how are they using that data to uh, shape their classes, to offer the programs that we're offering to our students? And then once that gets approved, or once they get uh, that completed, the high school administration will go, uh, they go present to an A C D board. And the A C D board votes whether to give the full accreditation or not.
So at this time, we're not accredited?
We are accredited. It just expires at the end of this year. So we're up for accreditation again. So we don't want to let that expire.
And so we're bringing a consultant in to then do what they already done.
Correct. And it changes because it's a four-year accreditation process. And then this is the company that this, the company is A C D. It's a nonprofit. This is who will accredit, this will, will give the final accreditation blessing to us. So they, it's a pretty complex process. So they help the high school walk through to the final end.
So it's a one-year contract?
Yes, one-year-old, correct.
That was my assumption.
Yeah. Good questions.
Any other question? Okay, uh, do I have a motion to adopt that consent or that consent of the agenda?
I made a motion.
All second.
Second in this week's draft. Okay, reports. First we have Pioneer School Elementary?
Yep.
Hello. Pass these. I made a copy if you didn't. If you want to hold it down, please. All right. Well, um, I'm Alicia Porter and here Catherine Fuller. She is a principal intern at Pioneer this year. Um, and we're here to talk to you about our school and about our school improvement plan. So I guess the first part, you know, in, in that creating the school improvement plan is we do a really comprehensive needs assessment, looking at all of the data that we have, right? So we have access through our school district um, home room system to lots of data. And our team got together and we broke into different groups and went through the data to determine, you know, what do we need to work on as a school? And we found out that really lined up really well with the areas that we are designated for improvement through the state. So every, um, all of our elementary schools have a designation for improvement and Pioneer is um, designated for improvement in um, the uh, category of students who identify as Hispanic Latino, bring reduced lunch category, and then also our multilingual learners. Um, and looking at our data, our SBA data, our STAR data, um, using unit assessments, survey data from students and parents, we did find that those were the areas that um, needed improvement. Specifically the Hispanic Latino, multilingual learners and reintroduced lunch category. So you'll see that in our goals. You know, you might notice why we're calling out those categories and that is why, because those are the areas where um, designated for improvement. And those are the areas that our data shows we really need to work on. So at our school, we have about three hundred students. It fluctuates a little bit, twenty-four certs. We have um, a high percentage of multilingual learners at Pioneer. We have sixty-five percent, almost two thirds of our students are learning English as um, their second language, their native language is Spanish, um, or a different dialect of Spanish. We have eighty-eight percent low income. That's dropped a little bit from last year. It's gone down a little. Twenty percent of our students are identified as migrant and that is the, you know, the highest number that we've had at our building in quite a while. We also have about twenty percent of our students are identified as having a disability through an I E P, you know, whether for speech or specific learning disability, disability or developmental delay. And approximately eight percent of our students are qualified under the McKinney and Dova- McKinney Bento Act, which is also known as homeless. So about eight percent of our students are experiencing homelessness. So um, with that being said, we have developed goals around our culture of safety and belonging, which aligns with this school district strategic plan. And also we have a goal around uh, ELA, English language arts and math. So our first goal um, is around that um, culture of safety and belonging. And we use the panorama survey that we give twice a year. We did the survey in the fall and in the spring and in looking at that data, our um, teachers and our um, school improvement planning team that met, we were really concerned because this question around do our students feel like they can reach their future goals? They, students were not reading themselves very high on that. They, um, it was only forty-seven percent of our fourth and fifth grade multilingual learners responded favorably to that question. So we want to improve that, you know, six to sixty-seven percent at least. That's not, you know, a super high number, but it is twenty percentage points. And so um, we really want um, to see that number go up. And um, the strategies that we're implementing to try to, you know, reach that goal is a book study that we're doing on the science of hope. And that will be, that's available to, you know, all of our teachers and some of our paras, you know, we asked if they would want to participate as well. We have twenty people that um, said that they wanted to do this book study, which is a really good number and mostly they were all teachers. And a few support staff. So they're really invested in that, you know, they want to learn about that and how we can try and instill that um, self-efficacy in our students as well. And another um, strategy that we have for this area is goal setting. So we want to, we're having all of our students set short-term and long-term goals. Personal and academic. And if you walk down our halls, you'll see that teachers have put the kids' personal goals up in the hallways and um, they're checking in on those monthly in some cases and also quarterly with the um, data that we, we collect. So um, those are our strategies for our culture of safety and belonging. And also one thing I want to say is we do a lot of other things as well. These were just really the strategies that we picked, you know, um, two for each of the goal areas that we're really focusing on and that we're monitoring um, with our school improvement planning team. Like every strategy that we have, we're figuring out with our team, how are we going to actually monitor it? To make sure that everyone's doing it and that everyone's on board. Um, you'll see that partway through that forum there, ninety-five percent of our students did respond favorably to the question, do you have a teacher or other adult from the school that you feel like you can count on to help you no matter what? And ninety-five percent of the kids said that. So that was a real success for us that we feel like, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent of the kids said that they have somebody at Pioneer that they know can help them. And so we're really proud of that number, you know, everybody of course wants to know who those other five percent are. So we can try and intervene, but you know, it's anonymous survey and we want to keep it like that. So our kids are honest with us. Um, but uh, definitely that's something we're proud of. And um, I'm gonna go, Catherine's gonna talk about our second goal.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Sorry. Our second goal is focused on our student growth percentiles in math and we kind of wrote two in here. One focused on our students receiving multilingual services and then one focusing on our Hispanic Latino group. So for our students receiving multilingual services, we want to increase their scores in math, um, measured by the STAR assessment from sixty point eight percent receiving scoring typical to high growth. Scoring typical or high growth to eighty percent scoring typical or high growth. And then for the Hispanic Latino group, we want to increase those students' growth from fifty-one percent scoring typical high growth to eighty percent scoring typical or higher. And we have some strategies to focus on this goal. Our first strategy is focusing on uh, discourse in math. And our team met and we talked about three different things to make it really achievable for our teachers to implement discourse in math. And so we're focusing on using sentence trains uh, to promote language and then having students work in pairs or small groups to share their reasoning when they're working on math. And then using strategic questioning to engage all the students. And then our second strategy is we have a targeted intervention block in our schedule. And this allows all students in class to work on math during that targeted intervention time, because the normal intervention block, students who are pulled for multilingual services go out of the classroom for their services. And so that targeted math block gives teachers a chance to really work on math. Um, and we're also focusing on when we drilled down the data, um, we noticed that the strand of fractions needed some of the biggest growth. And so as a whole school, we're really focusing on the strand of fractions and working on building that skill.
Yeah. And what's um, been uh, something else that we put in place is our school improvement team, you know, we meet twice a month, we meet one day a month um, for the whole day. And we did this through our grant. So that's how the subs are funded for the teachers and we only, we get subs for four of the teachers and then, but we have a team of ten who meets. And we are meeting to say, okay, let's look at the data and see are our kids improving in these areas? And also what support do teachers need? Because there's so much, you know, there's a lot, there's professional learning and professional development that we need to provide them, you know, especially in this area of fractions, this just came up. And so, you know, we're going to have our district math coach come in and provide some PD for our teachers during collaboration time about, you know, looking at the data and then saying, why is this important that we start earlier in the year? And um, you know, so we're, we're not just putting it on paper and um, just having it there to turn in and be done with it. We really are trying to monitor it and make sure that this happens um, all the way across our building. So the other, the ELA goal, the English language arts, which is, you know, reading and writing, uh, we are trying to improve, increase those student growth percentiles in ELA, so fifty-five percent to eighty percent um, for our students identifying Hispanic Latino. And then from about sixty-eight percent to eighty percent, you know, so that first, that number of sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent, that's a pretty high number and where we would expect to be, but we need to get, you know, if we want to keep pushing our kids further and catch up with our proficiency rates, then we need to try to, you know, hit that high growth. So we want to try for eighty percent typical or high growth um, for this coming school year. And um, our team met, you know, uh, when we did that needs assessment, we tried, we did like a root cause analysis at the time to say, why do we think we're getting these scores? And then um, we drilled down and then from there, we came up with the strategies. And so one of the strategies that we chose, um, they're both GLAD strategies. So um, I know you guys have seen that on board agendas and had different PD yourselves on that. And one of the things is sentence patterning charts with, which helps with writing and then also learning logs. So we're, um, that's a strategy that we're asking every teacher to do. And we're also providing professional development in that as well. And support to make sure that we're able to, you know, to do it. And um, so teachers are doing those with students. Those really help with language. Especially it's important for our language learners that we are using GLAD strategies, but it's also good teaching for all students. So all of these strategies really impact everyone, although we're targeting specifically, you know, multilingual learners and students identifying as Hispanic Latino. Um, and the other strategy that we are working on really hard is um, our professional learning community cycle. So we do the plan, do study, adjust cycle with our teachers. We meet for collaboration on Mondays. Teachers get, they create an agenda, you know, or we have building agendas or um, collab- uh, grade levels across the district, like it's very calendar out. And teachers meet and um, look at data, determine, you know, action plans and next steps to, um, from there. And so we have that really nice collaboration time, two hours every Monday. So we want to make sure we're making the best of that and um, using that time wisely, uh, because we know it's a real, it's a real big gift that we have in our district that not everybody has. So that, those are the strategies um, for ELA. And um, the last part, you know, we want to make sure to include something about um, how we're working with our families. We had um, a really awesome family night with over two hundred and fifty people who came a few, couple of weeks ago, November first. And um, so that family night was great. We've been having really big turnouts, but in addition to that, we're trying to get more parents um, feeling comfortable coming into school, volunteering. And we've had more people doing that recently than we've had in the past. Like our parent group has grown um, with more members supporting our school than we've had. And so that's, I mean, it's been really great to see. Our meetings are um, well attended. You know, we're able to provide um, childcare. So parents can focus on what's going on in the meeting and the kids can go and play um, while they're being supervised. And so, you know, our, our families have expressed that they feel like these kind of events that we're having really help them feel recognized and valued. We give surveys after all of our events to see how it was received by parents and families and anything we can do to improve for the next the next one that we'll have. And uh, we just highlighted another piece of data from our parent survey last spring, our panorama survey that you know, ninety-four percent of our parents said responded favorably or positively to the question, how much respect do you think teachers have for children? So that was a really great, you know, feedback to get from parents um, about the work that we do. So do you guys have questions? I'm sure.
I just wanted to find out how you said you were hoping to monitor all of this. hoping to monitor all of this. In what ways are you monitoring? How are you trying to?
Yeah, so depending on which one it is, so we went through each strategy, so there's some things where we're progress monitoring, like we're looking at the data to see how our kid's growing in that way. And then there's also process monitoring, which is are we doing it? Are we actually doing these strategies that we say that we're doing? And so one of the things that the team created, our teachers created it, is a walkthrough tool. So the, the instructional coach we have at the building and myself, you know, separately, we can go through the building together into classrooms and say, are we using sentence frames? Are kids um seated and talking in groups? Are we using the sentence patterning chart? All the things that we said we're going to do, are we doing that? And not like in a gorgeous, you know, not gonna be um you know, names or anything like that, but just to collect the data. And then to say, okay, if we're not doing it, why? Do we not think it's valuable? Do we need to do something differently? Or do we just not know how to do it yet? And so that's, that's what the feedback we're trying to get.
Is there ever just a lack of time?
Oh, yeah, so definitely. Yeah, yeah, there is. And so what's some of the things that we're doing, I know um today, for example, our first grade team met with our uh district deal, English Language Development Specialist and my building coach and um, you know, Victoria, uh our Director of Support Services was there, myself. And we're going through the curriculum and saying what things can we throw out? And what things are really important that we need to, to keep in and what do we need to add in to help our kids be able to access the curriculum? And so it was really nice to, you know, it's our, we're doing this with every building. It's not just Pioneer, about a grade level or two at every building. And we're gonna expand out to where everyone's doing that, but it's the teachers doing it, saying what they want, you know, what they, what they want to prioritize and what they want to, you know, what is not essential, because because curriculum is just so extensive. Every curriculum you get, you could teach for twenty four hours a day, so not get through it all, so.
Thank you.
So getting up to eighty percent.
Yeah.
Seems like a big goal.
Yeah.
Um is there, is there a longer term goal? Like, what's that look like in three years, five years? Is that something that you guys do or?
Yeah, we, we set our goals per year, um and then, you know, so seeing where we get next year, then we'll set another goal from there. Um and another thing that we did talk about looking at is proficiency as well, like are we meeting, you know, the state standard for efficiency? Are we meeting the growth expected? So there's, I know at the work session later, we're gonna look at that SBA data to kind of give you guys an idea of what that looks like. Because a big part of what we are scored on by the state is growth and growth on the SBA. And then it, but also proficiency on SBA. So it's trying to kind of, you know, look at both balance though. See what can we really, you know, make, what can we see that we're making a difference on right now? But yeah, that's thinking about for the future, where do we want to go?
Well, you know, it kind of goes back to that real school improvement, it is those you know, five to seven percentage points strung out three years in a row. You know, so in that three years, you're up to, you're up fifteen. So that's, that's really what the goal is, you know, that there's, the studies have been known, these turnaround leaders that come in and get a fifteen percentage point game, but then if they leave, well, the minute, you know, the, something changes, the gains go away too. So the way that I, I really appreciate Alicia's approach and Wandy's approach as well, is it is, they're, they're looking for sustained improvement over time, uh through really thoughtful strategies and, you know, to use when I look this up, I'll fact check myself. You know, we were to teach all the common core standards, it would take till the kid's twenty one years old. So what, and that's just a K twelve. So what Alicia's doing and her team and the, the, the work that uh Tori is doing is really getting clear about what are those essential standards, what are those essential strategies that are could give us the most bang for about, while the kids are with us for the seven point two five hours day that we have.
Do school improvement plans include family strategies?
Some do, we have some that have some fam- well, some, they can't. Uh but we're really focusing on uh students set, saving long as far as, as um our three goal areas, but every school does have to have a parent engagement plan as well attached to it. So they do have a parent engagement plan, it should be those parent strategies, uh it's just not attached to this. That's the title of our requirements.
But that, that, that parent plan is kind of whole, right? We're not engaging parent plan to each student. That, that means. For our, right, but we're not into your, in your, like, as far as strategies and, and planning for goals with students. Can they incorporate their parents into their goals?
Oh, their goal, their individual goal setting, is that what you're asking?
I'm looking at math and reading and I'm like, there's just no way you can ever achieve the goal that you're trying to achieve without strategies, any, with some sort of home-based strategy. So that's a, that's.
Yeah, how are you engaging parents in their, their goal sets?
Um so during our conferences, I know I just had a conference at Pioneer in my fifth grade child's class and they uh went over, he, he went over his data to show where he's at right now and they actually set goals during that time. Um he had a goal, first of all, data, and then after that, he um setting a goal for uh the winter, like where does he want to be in the winter time? Um and so I know that our, um a lot of our teachers are doing that during conference time, you know, they're required to have students go over their goals and um talk about, you know, uh what they need to do to get to the next level. Um now, as far as like grading the SIP plan and the um parent conference time together, I wouldn't say that it's, you know, that we're there yet, but that's something that we are always working on. I know all, most of our teachers, they did um they sent home or uh conference with parents to do a seed packet. I don't know if anyone experienced that, but what it was is asking like, what are your goals for your child? What do you hope your child accomplishes by the end of the school year? Um what is gonna be a stretch for your child this year and what is something that's a strength? And I know um several of my teachers at Pioneer did it, because it aligns with their new goals that they're studying that um the rubrics with the state, it was asking for uh teachers to really get informed by parents about what their child needs to work on and what they, what they hope to see for their child. And so I think continuing those conversations um are really important too. And then the teacher sharing, you know, this is where I'm hoping your child will get academically. But it's, was really cool to see like so many of the parents, um the papers, you know, the teachers are coming to show me. I would never have known this about this child without getting this input from the parent. Uh so.
Absolutely. The reason I also wanted to mention that is, you know, teacher conferences did just happen, but some of the feedback is if my child is so far behind, I don't know how to help them get more caught up.
Yeah.
So just like there, there's really no after-school or tutoring support within the community. Can it be actually realistic for them to get caught up while still behind? So just from a parent perspective, but I, I think a lot of people feel lost in how to support their child when they are behind. So then is it really the school's responsibility or outside community partners? I'm not sure, but.
That's a good point. Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think it is possible. We look at some of our students to catch up, look at our students' SBA data, growth data over time, and when the kids make, that are making typical and high growth. And it's a lot of our students, like you can see that if they continue to make that, that's why we're hammering so hard on typical and high growth. Because if they keep making that, eventually they are going to catch it. And you can see on the reports that we print out for every kid. Um the growth that they're making every year towards that projectile line um of where they can go to be, be at the proficient level. Um but that's good feedback, I think, to hear about, like, you know, how can we help parents feel like they can make a difference for their kids, you know, because they definitely can. I mean, our mission or, you know, we really believe that the parent is the child's first teacher and we can learn so much about them from the parents.
I find there's a lot of illiteracy still amongst the parents, because they weren't given that advantage.
We do have some parents, um I wouldn't say it's very many, but we do have some parents, yeah, who you know, aren't able to read and write yet. And um we support them with having, you know, uh we tend to know who the people are, you know, they, well, they'll express to our, our, our office staff is so awesome. That's a big plug for my school office staff. Parents are really comfortable with them and they will let them know and we help them fill out everything. So, but uh I'm sure there's somewhere missing still, but um.
And some of the strategies for parents too is really just providing that time and space for kids at home, you know, it doesn't necessarily, you don't have to be the content expert at all. You know, the, the teachers are and but having those conversations with the teacher about what they're learning and how you can support them. A lot of times just providing that, that consistent time and that consistent space for practice. Uh whether it's reading at their grade level for ten minutes a night or to complete their math homework. Uh there's so much intervention or taking place during the day too. So you kind of have to balance that, you know, how much more you want to intervene with them. I do miss the after-school programs, because it was really cool way that we had that with the city where they could work on their homework for about thirty minutes and then they have the rest of their time to play. So I do have a meeting on the books with uh Russ Harrington to talk about how we can get that going again. Right now it's ninety five dollars per month, which for some of our families, that's just not available and it's only at one location. So there has to be a way in our community, I'm really motivated, uh especially at the K five level. Uh how do we get that going um in that after, after, after-school gap that we have for our families? Because we have a high degree of participation, after-school opportunities for our middle school. High school does have an after-school tutoring program uh that they run. Uh it really is that K five gap. So I'll let you know, I'll, I'll let more know more how that goes. But I'm very motivated to, to try to get that up and going.
And one of the biggest things, um you know, we try to tell parents too is having your child keep, you know, their native language, that's really important because um being able to, to be bilingual is a, a great skill to have and it helps with your literacy later on and also just, you know, we have a lot of parents who are um they speak Spanish only, right? And just telling them, speaking to your kids, just talking to your kids um in Spanish is great, building up their vocabulary, like that's huge. Just talk to them when you're at the store, when you're cooking, um everything you're doing, you know, just, yeah, just. That can just, that can help so much build up vocab- uh vocabulary. I won't know.
One final question. Your, your third goal, um it it really identifies and introduces like um the racial demographics. Did you find that your school has a disparity for that ninety three percent of your students um separated versus just including those hundred percent versus ninety three?
When you're, when we look at the data by race, yeah, there definitely is between our students identifying as Hispanic Latino and our students identifying as white. You, and that's why we were identified by the state and other schools in our district also are. So students that are, um people get confused because there's a difference between multilingual learners and students identifying as Hispanic Latino. You know, our multilingual learners, we have sixty five percent of them, of our students are multilingual learners, but is it, I lost it. How many, what's the percent of, we get with like ninety something percent? No, that was low income. It's like ninety three percent of our students are, identify as Hispanic Latino. Um and so um we, yeah, we do see um when we disaggregate the data, which we're required to do, you know, by the state, it's good practice to see if there's any groups that we need to work with, that is a group that we're seeing that difference, for sure. And multilingual learners.
Thank you.
I don't want to cut you short, but we have three more reports to go.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Something smells hot.
Bite to go.
Yeah, I just smelled something.
Oh, yeah, I wonder what heater turns on. I'm pretty, uh.
So we're waiting for the alarm, yeah.
It's probably.
I said, yeah, nothing, this way, uh refrigeration fan, the heatation spot is right.
Oh, went out that way.
Yes. Near sex is.
Just a drill.
Steve, bear.
Steve, bite to go. That would be a good scene.
Yeah, Bernard, where did I got?
No, no, I, I did this, I did this incredible power. I, I did it myself. Someone pulled a fire alarm, so you didn't have to see my PowerPoint.
We have it on our.
There's just, there's just three slides, that's the best PowerPoint in this board.
Right here, I'm.
This is the heater, I think. Called it.
Smells like a.
Yeah, I can actually press on without that first slide. So board members and Dr. Bergman, thank you for having me. Um I'm Steve, I work for Second Harvest. And for those who don't know, our mission is really simple. We, we be people facing hunger. Um we work through about two hundred and fifty plus food banks across the region. I, I live in Spokane, I'm here, that kind of tells you a little bit about our scope and our reach. Um North Idaho, all the way over to the Cascade Crest and from the Canadian border down to the Oregon border. But my area of work is this Bite to Go program. Um and what we try to solve is that weekend food gap. You know, our schools do a great job now of getting breakfast and lunch to the kids who need it. But a good number of those kids aren't getting what they need over the weekends. And so that's really where Bite to Go lives. Uh it started on somebody's dining room table. It just started in conversation between neighbors and a school. That neighbor heard that there may be eight or nine kids at that school weren't getting enough to eat. That was Jefferson Elementary in Spokane and that was about ten years ago. That little grassroots effort, just the Stevenson family doing their thing, um has turned into Bite to Go, which today serves almost twelve thousand kids. Uh we're in two hundred and fifty schools, uh we're in like North Idaho and a bunch of counties in Washington, uh Tri-City, Shalane, whole Minnesota, um obviously Quincy is why we're here. Um the, the model is maybe the most important and a great part about this. It's the adoptive organization model, something that we kind of stood up to fund this thing. It's all privately funded. Uh it's organizations, uh businesses, churches, sometimes family groups and certainly civic groups, things like Rotary and Alliance Club, who say yes to the program. They say yes to funding the food that goes to school, goes to the kids that need it. Um we operate in a very lean way at Second Harvest. There are three of us that, that run this program, the twelve thousand people, but we do it on the shoulders of a lot of volunteers. Um the food that comes here to Quincy and we'll get into those details in a minute, but that food showed up today, in fact, uh at the hands of a volunteer driver. He loaded up Sprinter van and brought enough food for about two hundred and fifty kids for a month. And so we, as, as, as much as I want to acknowledge all the financial partners, everybody else who backs us, it's also a small army of volunteers who helps us do that work. Um one other key piece about the books that we bring onto this program, we're gonna actually get to meet with some organization that's doing some of the funding here in a minute. But we ask for an intent that they'll stick around for that school. You know, if they say yes to Bite to Go, if they say, yeah, we want to do this thing, we also needed to be there. Because kind of, kind of between the lines of what Alicia was talking about, some of the kids we serve are, they face a lot of inconsistency in their life, whether that's housing or things like utilities or the adults in their life. Um there's a lot that's coming and going. And so when we ask a business to join us, we also ask them to join us for a good long time, because if we're gonna bring Bite to Go to a school, to a community, want to make sure we're there next year, the year after, and the year after that. Um and quick note on food, so the funding, right? Um when a business comes on board, basic, especially at the elementary level, about a hundred and eighty dollars per year per child. And we work really hard to buy kid-friendly food, but we also have to meet those kids where they are. Kind of listen between the lines of what Alicia was talking about. We got kids who are homeless or they're experiencing maybe temporary housing. And we've also got kids who may not have adults who are fully present for them at home, right? Their addiction, mental illness, and everything's going on. So those parents aren't there for the kid the way we might think, the way we might want them to be. And so everything we have is, is kid-friendly, it's shelf-stable, because we can't assume that they have refrigeration. Everything's gonna have a pop top, so a seven or eight-year-old can open it with his or her fingers. Um nothing's gonna require a can opener, nothing actually requires a kitchen. Some of the stuff we have is better if it's heated, but it doesn't need to be. And that's kind of a key point, because we got kids living in cars, RVs, couch surfing, that type of stuff. Um but as much as we talk about food, it really, it takes, it takes community partners, it takes community champions. And it starts with, call it Nick made about two and a half years ago, to me and my, my colleague Tom Stevenson, uh just reaching out to announce, hey, in Quincy, we've got some needs and that conversation uh led us to funding first uh George Elementary. The com- you know, Nick raised his hand, brought awareness to us that there was some need in Quincy and that need focused first on, on George. And when we started looking around, we quickly landed with Microsoft, uh who had the willingness to help us fund that program. And Lisa Karstetter, your local champion, uh has worked with Second Harvest in the past to bring mobile markets and other things to the area. But Bite to Go really satisfied, you know, her desire to see food meet kids where they are. And rather than making people drive to go get something, bringing it directly to kids when they're already at school. They get a bag on Friday, they get to take it home. Um but it takes a guy like Nick to, to raise his hand. First, I could see the second slide, because I do want to talk now about what that impact looks like locally, like who's on board and what's getting done here. These are in alphabetical order, not quite chronological order, because Microsoft was the, the first leader uh with George and then stepped in to help pioneer uh to start off. I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um but then, another, through, through Nick, another great conversation um sprang up and that was with the good folks at Amway. And it was about this time last year that we started talking with them about how to pick up a couple of more schools. Uh and I'll, I'll turn things over to Heather here in just a quick moment, but to kind of unpack this, so Amway is supporting a hundred and twenty kids, so sixty kids a week at each, at Angel X Mountain View are getting Bite to Go. Um our teachers and counselors are the ones, first of all, who are identifying the kids, and then they're also the ones who are getting that food to the kids. So on that. And then they're also the ones who are getting that food to the kids. So on that, we don't have any requirements. We're really trusting, because we hear the feedback from teachers, like those who are working with and around food insecurity kids. Kind of sort of know it, right? The behaviors show up, but also they can build a composite, like how does, how's family arriving and things like that. If they tell us the needs there, we, that's it, that's all we need to know. And then when when teachers or counselors are giving out that food on a Friday, we ask that that be a really private exchange. Like that is not something that the rest of the class needs to know about, not something the rest of the school community knows about. There's a ton of stigma already around issues like food insecurity. So we ask everybody involved along the whole chain to be really thoughtful and mindful of the kids we're serving. But through Amway and through Microsoft, we're we're feeding almost two hundred and fifty kids in the community. And there's more to go and we're working on it. Um, but I I asked Heather to come to kind of talk about what it means. For Amway, for you guys, and for the community. So, yeah, if you would.
I I will.
Please.
I will. Amway really intentionally targets, um, targets are corporate giving to children and nutrition. So bike to go and QSD was a really natural place for us to to partner. Our kids attend the schools, um, our our families and friends work in the district. So many of us see the nutritional need firsthand. Um, hungry kids have to work a little bit harder to access the, all of the hard work and all of the resources that QSD, uh, brings brings forward. And we want them to be able to take full advantage. So we're really grateful to be able to join with the corporate donors at Microsoft to to support this. And so we're looking forward to expanding our support over the next few years.
Yeah, I want to thank both you guys for, uh, there they are. See, that was our first drop-off at, uh, that's, uh, it's Mountain View, right?
Ah, yeah, it was a really exciting day.
Yeah, that was, uh, early September and then there's the Amway team to meet us. Um, I'm taking a photo, that's why it's so good. And then if we could just see the next slide, the last, the final slide, I just wanted to also, uh, relay some of the commentary that's coming from school leadership. Like how this program has landed for them. So first we've got Whitney Gregg at Ancient Lakes, I'll just read it, since I'm here, I can see it. Students are so excited about their food bags and it is such a great way for us to let students know and feel how much we care about them. And then from Manny Ramos over at Mountain View, your commitment to helping our community has fostered a sense of care and compassion among our students. We can create an environment where every child has the opportunity to thrive. And they both hit on something really big there. Like, again, we talk about food, like my team, we fixate on food, we gotta buy enough food for twelve thousand people every week. Gotta go negotiate Pepsi and Nabisco and everybody else for good pricing, but sometimes we forget what's really at the heart of this thing. When those kids open a bag of food, it's like, okay, cool, we've got calories for the weekend, but they also know somebody out there cared. And it's name brand stuff. And so when they pull that stuff out, they also get to feel for a moment like they're equal to. Like these are kids who are showing up a lot of different ways feeling less than. And we give them a moment and a week when they get to feel equal to. And they get to see these big name brands, great food, kid-friendly stuff, and they get to feel like they deserve the best. So and that's, that is solely through our partners, uh, to make it possible. We have a lot of people who've said yes to the program and have made it a really vital thing. So that's the thirty thousand foot view. Questions?
You still do the drive up or the drive line chewed, right?
Yeah, so Second Harvest, that's called a mobile market. And in fact, Amway funded three of those in the Quincy area. Did one last week? Not my program, thank goodness, because we would have missed it. But, but yeah, no, we still have the mobile market. It allows us to feed about two hundred and fifty people in a, in a shop. We pull up in a big city bus or a truck, for those who haven't seen it. And we have pre-built boxes of food. It's enough for a family, like this is a child solution. That mobile market addresses the whole family, big box food, lots of produce from our produce, from our, from our growers. And typically some some beef or something like that from from our beef groves.
Do local farmers help?
Enormously. So again, putting on my Second Harvest hat, because this is a purchase program, we buy food for bike to go. Second Harvest processes about thirty-five million pounds of food a year. Ninety, ninety-five percent of it is coming as donations. And of that, about sixty percent is coming from the ag community, the rest is coming from the grocery world. But yes, we, apples, potatoes, onions, and then certainly everything else at Washington grows seasonally.
I only worked on one of that that summer. There's the main thing, what they had available.
Yeah, salmon one, I went to that. Salmon one, I went to Home Mobile and the fishery did that too. Yep. Yeah, no, we put a high premium on getting things like fresh produce to people. We probably get about forty percent in those boxes. Um, cause it, yeah.
And we're very organic, I mean.
For the schools, um, are we covering all our bases? Is there still a need? Are we?
I I think, yeah, I mean, I I would actually have to defer to people in this room who probably know better. But when you begin to dig in and when you begin to kind of create that culture bike to go and you kind of normalize it, then a few more hands start to go up.
Yeah.
And so I would, I would guess, well, actually George is a really good example. When we started, Nick, it was probably about twenty-five or thirty, and then just over the two and a half years or so that we've been active at at George Hillman. Yeah, it's over, it's doubled plus a little.
We have one elementary that still is not being covered, that's money in elementary, so we can rank order of need, uh, based on their food reduced lunch levels, so.
And and the only reason we are hitting those potentially is because of finances and having something back.
Correct. Yeah, we need, we need, we need the willing partners or the the folks who are right, said yes to say yes to more.
So when you look for corporate sponsors, is, I mean, do you obviously want them to sponsor an individual school? But are you also open to saying, hey, if you could just give us enough meals for whatever, maybe fifty kids, a hundred kids a year?
Yeah, we.
Distribute where it needs to be.
We're open to it and we certainly do have a general fund and it allows us to cover gaps. It allows us to cover the moment when an adoptive organization has to say no. Um, churches in particular are vulnerable because, uh, congregations are shrinking, they're aging and we've had to have a few that have tapped out. But I think we work really hard to find the right funders and they tend to stay with us. We have about a ninety percent donor retention rate, which in the world of philanthropy is ridiculous, like forty percent is the national average, more better than ninety. So, but and that's also because we work really hard to find the right partners. So, thank you.
So we, we did the, we've been doing the mobile food banks for five years?
Yeah, at least, yeah.
So for five-ish years and then this opportunity presented itself, so we went after what we thought, what we thought we could do with the first, um, with the first impact grant. From from our headquarters. And we, we took a guess at how many kids we thought we were gonna need. And so our plan is to go back, you know, get an assessment at the end of the school year. See if sixty kids per school is enough to really get the job done. We want to fully serve, um, fully serve Ancient Lakes and Mountain View. And then, um, you know, I'm gonna go back with my handout and.
Once, once Heather told me that we missed school, that's when I told her, okay, we're gonna figure that out. We're gonna work on that, so, because that doesn't sit well with me.
No.
So.
Our plan is to, is to continue to try to fill the gap. And I imagine Lisa will be in it, it'll be a race.
Well, that's, that is a nice thing. Sometimes it actually does kind of, in a, in a, in the best way possible. Sometimes pits corporations against each other as they raise their filters, gaps in the community. It is, it's, it's the problem we hope for. As that bike to go, so.
And that's the problem I hope to give you.
Please, but you've brought us a great set of problems.
Thank you, Bear, love it.
All right, well, yeah, and just, uh, while I'm, since I'm here in your hometown, I will invite any of you if you're ever in Spokane, you want to learn more, see the word up close and personal, it's an open door. Heather's been there, survived.
That's a very cool site, yeah, a very cool site.
So field trip or whatever, it's an open door for you guys.
Thank you.
And I do want to just mention the corporate donors. It wasn't even like a, let me think about it, is, yes, we'd love to help. So just so thankful for Amway, New Zealand, Microsoft. It was a really easy ask. Thank you all.
Thank you. Hey, the next report is written from. Alton Haley.
This is just the ones and questions.
Didn't, any of you have anything? The next one is transportation that was written. Did anybody have anything to add to that or ask about that?
I did, uh, uh, curious how many parent feedback on spark smart program and you can follow up later on that, Nick. As far as what are the parents thinking of the new smart tag program?
Yeah, we have not surveyed specifically on that.
Sure, there's been some cough.
Oh, you have any?
Not saying it's bad, not saying it's bad.
I think we've had this, with this one every year. Mm-hmm. Yeah, close to a year. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
No. I can just tell you my, uh, my experience as a parent, but not digital out there. I know the drivers love it. Uh, because it gives them turn-by-turn directions too, so that helps, especially if we have a sub, um, that's new to a route. Uh, so that's really helpful. And then they also see who's on the bus, their picture pops up with the name. So the subs and the drivers, they have to do a new route. But I mean, that's, we can definitely put someone out there to ask families that.
Just curious.
Yeah.
If parents can track their kids, that's what I am.
They can track, yes, they, they, they track the bus, they track the buses, it's all hooked to a GPS.
That's if it's working.
Yeah, it's working. But, uh, the coding that's different than what we used to use. So we used to use, it just tracked the bus, it was just in GPS. Now, you know, like our, my children are regular bus drivers. So, and whether or not they remember to ride the bus on the day that we told them to ride the bus is kind of, I, it's something that I worry about a little bit. So on the day I know they're riding the bus, I will get a notification pop on my phone, especially my middle schooler, because she talks and doesn't pay attention. I see when she goes, sorry Gabby, if you're listening. Uh, I see her tag on Gabby scanning off, and then I go, oh, ground now, she needs to get home, hopefully she remembers to get off the bus. With, 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 and she's with our, our youngest Sophia.
Yeah.
And then I see tick, tick, they both scan off, so then I know that they've gotten home.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And the twenty-minute notification.
Yeah, I do like that one too.
Yeah, yes, and then I had it, and I have it set to a ping.
Yes.
I could, you could do the radius to where like, once it hits, you know, Trinidad or when it hits certain location, you're gonna notice that they're twenty minutes out. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
Good program.
It is when it works right. Um, and it works right, and if it works right, I would say more than it. Yeah, that's my experience. Um, but I think you can throw something out there to.
I'm curious.
Now, this child that. And you got for me too, or? How did, well, I understood the bus driver had him on his list.
Yep.
But some days he went to.
Another location, uh, which to, well, most days they, in the afternoons, they, this child always went to daycare. In this whole particular instance, the child got put on the wrong bus.
Oh, wrong?
No, excuse me, on, on their wrong afternoon bus, but it was a regular morning bus.
I see.
So when they scan on, the scan.
It's can.
Morning. So we've since gone back and took all the data to make sure that would never happen again. So now, this particular child, if they try to scan on their, their morning bus, it won't let them. It comes up red, it will only, they can always scan on to their afternoon bus. So we had to do some cleanup on the backside of that. And then I know, uh, this porter, it's an elementary principal, has done some other redundancy strategies within the ability to make sure that that doesn't happen again.
Okay, your report.
Good.
I'll be brief. Uh, student-led conferences, uh, again, I checked in with each of the principals. We don't have an official count right now, but. Generally speaking, it's ninety-five percent across the board, even at our secondary. It's a really, really high percentages of parents participating and, um, going to their child conferences, which I just. I'm so impressed, I'm so happy about, really thankful that our parents see that, that importance of engaging with the teachers. Uh, I remember when I was a high school principal, or high school principal, high school teacher, we had conferences. And I remember seeing around, waiting for six parents to show up over two nights. Um, but we put them on the student, and the students have to set their goals, share their goals, talk about their program, talk about, um, on track to graduation with their parents. Uh, it really motivates families to come, because they learn a lot through the experience as well. So just really appreciate that. Um, thankful for all of our parents and their support of their kiddos. Little Women, I attended on Saturday matinee. If you have not attended Little Women, I highly recommend it. I knew nothing about Little Women, never seen movies, never read the book. I went in completely cold and loved it. It was great. I, I won't give away the ending, because I was a little disappointed, I ended, but, um, uh, so I just highly recommend. Uh, they are showing on, I believe, Friday and Saturday. Saturday, Saturday, there'll be another matinee and you can show Heather a lot, so. Um, and with that, the pack upgrade was completed and it sounds amazing. Uh, it is noticeable. If you've been to any of our places in the past, the sound is completely noticeable, the, the difference. So they are trying to schedule a listening party, so I'll let you know when that happens. Um, I would like to recognize Jessica Blancas publicly. Uh, she had two first-place state, uh, award recognitions for her communication efforts by the Washington State. Um, Communication Directors Association, so our last year's calendar, um, which was the one that was centered in Student Voice. That got first place out of, uh, um, just, I think about thirty or forty districts, um, of ten thousand or less. And then her Hispanic Heritage Campaign, um, also got first place out of social media campaign. And then I, she didn't, she kind of hit this one for me, uh, she won a national award, so she had a top twenty calendar nationally. So it's pretty amazing just to have the level of talent that we have in Quincy School District, to help with communications and what we're doing. So she's amazing. So congratulations, Jessica. Just on the board, uh, on Thursday, we have pathways to graduation night, which is, I'd say, probably our biggest family night in the district. Uh, it's a really good time to learn all the pathways that we have, talk with the teachers. The last year, we had right around seven hundred people attend, so it's a great night. Uh, starts at five, five to seven, and it's a drop-in, so you don't have to be there right at five. Um, but encouraging you to attend that. And then I have my family superintendent advisory council meeting tomorrow at five thirty at QMS. So the main, at QMS, my family advisory council meeting, where we're representatives throughout the. So the first of it will just be, uh, uh, first half of the meeting, we, we, listening and family sharing with what's going on in their buildings. First, student concerns and things that they're facing in their own building. Uh, and then the second half is gonna be about, um, artificial intelligence and how they're thinking about it. That's the one group that we really haven't engaged with, um, very well, in my opinion, is our parents. So, uh, looking at their perspective on, on AI and how they're, how they're thinking about it.
And that's fair.
So, yeah.
Schools. The middle school.
Yep, those are right. Any, any other questions for me? So, yeah.
Hey, um. You don't have a student or board leadership report, does it make you a report?
I would just, as soon as I can say, is boss is coming up. Um, we will be taking, we'll be leaving around three o'clock on Wednesday. Uh, if you'd like to ride, Shannon's providing with this, do you guys like to ride? Anyone else? Or you told me you're riding, you're driving yourself, you're driving yourself. And we'll be reimbursing you guys for mileage and chat. I know he's driving himself, so we'll make sure that you guys, um, box server ready at three. Yeah, about seven, three or three thirty, I filled that calendar.
I saw it there.
Three thirty, cameras, three thirty. Uh, and I'll add you to that in my video, just so you have that. And then by Friday, I'll have kind of a general itinerary for you guys to review, just so you have to go take back emails about when we're going for dinner. The conference dates and, and all that too, so I'll make sure you get that.
I thought you already said that.
I said invites to your Allah calendar, but I'm gonna send you a little page or two, just so you have kind of a laws to add to clients, because there's a lot going on at that conference. So I'm, we're, we're making kind of a laws to add to clients.
And I do have a question. I don't recall or I read it, but there was something we had to be prepared for. And I could not get it to print out. Do you recall what that was for Wasta?
I am not aware of that.
And it was in a PDF file, but I could not get.
What did you get pre-registered for on Thursday? Did you get pre-registered for any of these sessions on Thursday?
Yes, she was pre-registered.
So it might be some.
Okay.
Cause. But it's the law, which is that I didn't.
I'll go back and look. Yeah, I don't know, we didn't.
Okay.
And then just so the board knows that there is, you know, in your first term, you have, uh, there's the required equity training that you can take. Um, they are all there, they are taking, it, it's just an opportunity for you to, to not have to travel or attend online, but there's also options online too.
Uh, can you, I was looking at that today. How do I know whether or not I need to take?
You all need to take that, all new board members.
And is there something that, because I was looking at the schedule and there was nothing that indicated whether or not, but what is equity training?
It's just like equity one-on-one, but is equity.
But in other words, I just need to make sure I show up.
Just show up. It's, it's not a pre-registration.
Or I think there was one that was during the day, but they weren't setting dates.
There's one that's during the day, the one that I'm referring to is the only one during the day, and it's, it's a full-day session. I believe, or four hours. I'll, I'll confirm that. That will be also on your territories. And it's optional. If you don't, if you'd rather go to other sessions, you can go to other sessions and take it online. However, and then once you complete it, we'll print it and.
Hannah, can you just tell me Shannon, take this training?
Shannon. Get into that training.
Only a cannibal that this is, this is what you need to have.
Shannon, we need to go to that. There'll be other options.
Yeah.
In person, I'd rather.
Go to the other ones, yeah.
And do one though.
They do have it online as well. Yeah, they, I just haven't seen any dates yet. So, just kind of pick your voice.
Okay, so we are, oh no, we still have that policy.
Yep.
To review.
Uh I had a question with it, um. Kind of breeze through it all. Again. And I was noticing that there's nothing referring to how the. Devices affect bully, like the term bully is not used to like bullying, cause I know that that has been a battle, it's a cyberbully. And I don't remember ever seeing it referenced in any of this.
In our hidden, probably do reference.
In which one?
Uh. Like where would that, where?
Yeah, and then how, how, why, where would that come up as far as how it is, how it is?
What this policy does, it really just specifically addresses the use of telecommunication devices. The other piece would be, if they use that device just as an extension of their voice. Uh whether it's through a text or Snapchat, that would follow, and that all follows underneath it. Yeah, which is cross-referencing policy, and it is two oh seven.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it is that, thirty two oh seven is in the cross-reference at the bottom.
I just want to make sure that that's also something that is.
So that cross-reference, Shannon, that's, that gives us the uh. That gives us the latitude.
Oh, yeah, okay, that helps.
Okay, so that does give you latitude as far as if devices are being used for a cyberbully.
Correct. Yep.
That's my question.
Then your communicator, all the schools have been without cell phone?
A K eight, it's it's completely, there's a cellphone free, and then at nine twelve at the high school, it's cellphone free. During the class time, and that's really what's, that's the trend we're seeing with most, you know, for now, we're we're evaluating it. Um they can still use their phones at lunch and in passing periods. Um and then at QIA, it's a little bit different scenario, just because you have so many students coming in and out with the master base authority. So that's the the level distinction.
So what is the holding of um having that, you're just telling them they can?
So at at the high school, they just need to be put away, and if they come out, they get taken away, and high school, I mean, they are taking phones away, and we are seeing difference there. Uh at um elementary, there is no holding, there's no device, you just have to have it kept and put away, and. We don't see a lot of cell phones out, I, you know, I talked to elementary principal, they'll see it at like at recess. Um and then just a reminder that they get taken at at elementary too, but we are seeing more and more showing up at elementary, but in middle school, I would say. It's it's worth the most pervasive. And I would, I, certainly we did scout about seven, five percent of the kiddos in uh middle school have a cellphone. Or elementary is probably still at the maybe twenty five percent have cell phones, not as many, but we're seeing more and more. And they make it so easy to get a cellphone.
Yeah.
You only get four, some of this fine, you get, everybody in the family gets a a cellphone for free. Just have to pay the forty dollar. Next, eternity.
So I have a question related to trying to understand like policy versus procedure versus building level.
Procedure.
Okay, um in our board level one, there's nothing that's. Explicitly saying it's a no cellphone. Zone, I guess. Um which, I I, that's okay, I prefer it that way, where I don't like the idea of being universally one position. But at the procedure level, um that's where it introduces what each building is starting to do, right?
Correct, cause that's more of their procedure.
Okay.
And in that language, Dana, will be that copy paste to all student handles.
I see.
How we're gonna enforce it, what is the procedure for that?
Okay. Um I mean, sometimes uh policies and procedures will include a justification, I I think the only. Way to really understand honestly from a community perspective is looking at the cross-references to understand what you're trying to achieve with with these policies. Um. Uh you you said it would be evaluated, I'm really curious to see how it's.
High school?
Well, across the board, right, uh it's building levels, procedures as well, so. I'd like to ensure that there is some sort of evaluation where the line logic makes sense that. Because classroom management, this policy and procedure will influence it, and if it doesn't, then it was a wrong strategy.
Yeah.
So I just wanna really emphasize that.
And Dana, I think that's a really good point, I mean, we are, there is no sure thing, we've all, what we've heard from. There are a lot of districts that have gone full bans either right now, there's uh C three that and. A couple more, there's others that are exploring it, I know Roy Roy is exploring it right now. Um while while they just implemented the young pouch two, and they have some, and double data that is working really well, but as far as, you know, discipline rates. From just, from November twelve on compared to dis- discipline rates. Before, you know, that would be a really interesting look back, and you know, we can certainly, you know, come back at a later time in the school year. In in February or the spring to kind of say, you know, how's it going, what is the data number scene?
I think February is a really good idea, because I've heard many. Uh cell phones are causing the teachers to lose a lot of time, because they're always after them.
Yeah, yes, that's absolutely true.
Has has that initiative been can, um cause we haven't improved the policy yet.
In months.
Today.
It started today.
Start today, okay, I think February will be me too soon, usually you want to give it a quarter. To see if there's any data points or can show up, but some sort of pattern.
And then we can, I mean, February, April, I mean, whatever, I mean, we can, we can put something forward to the board. I don't, I don't give it a good eight weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Eight solid weeks in school.
Um otherwise, as far as the policy itself, um uh I like the language included, um. It does admit next time, if we can make it a different color, so you guys can see the difference to your first reading and second reading. But after F, um just really uh emphasizing a non-punitive approach first kind of model. This is a district initiative and just the thought of um. Our initiatives influencing potential harm to students is of concern to me, so just seeing ways that we can ensure that we're. Going first and on punitive approaches, I think this will be definitely the fight of the year within the middle D level. So I'm I'm hopeful, um I think kids will be responsible, I'm sure initially they'll be a little pushed back, but uh yeah, I'm curious to see how it goes and.
I was, I was at the middle school today at sixth grade, lunch, was the first time the kiddos had their phones put away, and it was day one, we're honeymooning. Um. I taught to probably about ten to twelve kids, and they weren't overly, they're like, uh. I mean, they weren't, they weren't that disappointed about, I will say, I believe that the middle school has done a really great job, but building wide is enforcing cellphone use, no cell phones.
Hmm.
Either either passing or in the classroom itself. So they haven't had their, the only time they really had their cell phones this year was lunch, so this is, so and I, that's why I appreciate. The strategy that the middle school took, it wasn't just cold turkey out the gates, it was, let's stair step this, let's get all the staff on board, let's make sure the kids and families are on board, then we'll implement. And so it did, the kids were, it wasn't, there was some anomaly to the pouch itself, you know, but it wasn't. I don't think, is that accurate?
I would say so, we um last week, week before, we spent a lot of time at lunches, allowing kids to see the pouches. Open them up, close them up, practice putting their phone in, lock it up, oh, here's I, unlock it, and that kind of thing. So we did that, we had every one of our uh parent conferences, we had a table so parents could see it, could look at it. Read the FAQ sheet and be able to get a lot more comfortable with the ideas. So um talk at several uh parent advisory meetings where we were able to share that, we dropped into classes and talked about it. So, you know, starting in November was really pretty good time. We were really able to meet with a lot of kids and parents and teachers, so it's very helpful, and.
How was, how was this Mrs. Scott at the end of the day with the kids walking their pouch?
Back.
Was it, they're going to get the pair on?
Yeah, they were on their way out the door, uh even those kids who hadn't used the pouches before, one way or another. Were able to open up their pouches and get moving right away, and so we have nine different unlocking stations throughout the building. Every day, so people can get out quickly and.
So, and if you guys want to wait on the district office today, if you like to go left, there's a magnet there, so what we've done is we didn't attach magnets. To the middle school, because if I was a middle school kid, I'd go out and go to my house real quick, my thing. So if, let's say they go home and it's, it's after hours or the weekend, they still have the ability to unlock their phone, it's just here at the district office. So that was communicated to parents as well.
Hey.
That's actually.
So.
That is an action.
Okay, so do you want your motion?
Make a motion to adopt second reading policy revisions and anything else on that there, Paul.
I accept.
And the second, all those in place? Anybody? Okay.
Chad, did you oppose?
Sorry, I said I to the, to yay.
To the poller.
You know, he, yeah.
The timing was close.
Okay, hey. Um any unfinished business that, none? Being adjourned, we've got a work.
Yes, we got a work session, yes, great. Yep, and um we have Ariselli and Jose, so we have pizza in there for the board and everybody else.
Thank you.
Cause this work session, um break some bread, but they will, they brought um tamales for the board. They would like to give a picture with the board to post on their PVC, so they made homemade tamales very well, so thank you, Jose. Yes. All right, so let's take, let's take ten, we start back up at seven, that sound good?
Sure.
We have a packet of information for you today, um we're going to really talk about. Um data assessment result, uh specifically proficiency data. Um and what it really means in context, and so. As we're working together, we're, you know, getting this high level understanding of the state proficiency data, and I'm I'm really hoping for. Great discussion around uh the difference in the proficiency data and student growth, because I know that's been brought up before here that. That can be sometimes really confusing, so I want to talk through that. Um definitely highlight some data celebrations and then areas for improvement that we really are focusing on in our school improvement and and district. Um I want to give you a little taste of the smart down assessment question and format, to give you an idea of what students are actually taking. And then um we'll have some trend comparisons, so, but um over time, ELA versus math. Um Quincy School District versus State data, and then. Looking at all students and then specifically our middle school learners, and they definitely have some special consideration for thinking about proficiency. Okay, so um the. Required assessments for the state, we have the murder balance assessment, sometimes referred to as FPA. That's for local ELA and math in grade three through eight and high school, um we first get that at tenth grade. And then there's the Washington Conference for the Department of Finance, which is a block gap. And that's every five, eight, and ten, and then first, the Vida access is a definitive. Assessment for our multilingual learners, um and that could be any student K twelve uh with a primary home language other than English. Who's not yet exited the program and they exit with a certain score. Uh that's without Vida access. So um we talked a little bit last year about the WISD. Framework, and that's the Washington School Improvement Framework. Um this is how um all of the schools in this state are um really assessed. And this information um gets published on the OSK report part. Uh in a K through eight school, you're assessed on different components than at high school, N through twelve. So the components at a K eight school are um forty percent is about proficiency, which we're gonna talk about today. Even more, so fifty percent of our overall score is actually about growth, so we've talked about about ELA and math. Student growth percentile, and the reason why we start there, and you'll see that plot in the school program plans. Is um as Alicia pointed out, we have um definitely, uh we're able to see growth in all groups. And then to a proficiency level, so we're really focused on growth, and again, that's the highest per uh percentage that our K schools are. Um are rated on, and then uh EL progress is specifically the Vida access. Um that's for our multilingual learners taking the Vida, however, it is important to note that the different student groups, including our multilingual learners. Um their information is aggregated in our proficiency and growth data as well, so you might hear us talk about um. Uh maybe support multilingual learners in proficiency or growth, which might be separate from EL progress. Uh and then there's the student volume, student success indicator, which a K five is just attendance, um at nine twelve. Uh a little bit different percentage, thirty percent proficiency you're right now. Fifty percent, so a really huge portion is the graduation rate, five percent EL progress, and then fifteen percent um includes not only attendance. But ninth grade success and dual credit. Uh so I really wanted to highlight for you the the difference between proficiency and growth. The proficiency is expressed through what we call a scale score that gives students a level. And that shows if a student by grade level is on track for readiness for college level learning. By the time they graduate without needing any remedial classes, so they'd be prepared to just start a college level class without having to look any.
Ninety nine series, they jump right into a hundred level, hundred, hundred level.
So when you have proficiency for a high school smart down assessment. That is sharing with, you know, schools are in the state, but you do not need to take any remedial classes, they don't, they shouldn't take remedial classes if they have that.
And the previous assessment, so like Losol and MSP, that did not count as a college level, it's an entrance exam. When they made that change with SBA, because of your, this is at such a high level, that it does count as a college entrance exam. And and it also is used for that on-track graduation as a whole other thing, but for example, my daughter, fourth grade student. Conferences, we got uh information saying that she's not on track to graduate, cause she hasn't taken the SBA yet. So when she takes SBA, if she passes it, she's on track to graduate, but then there's so many different other factors that can. Put the kiddo back on track to graduate or take them on, like an SBA's one.
Yes, and growth, which we've talked about before, but. Definitely takes a little bit of like of thinking about, a little bit of a mind bend, it's actually expressed in the context of how. Other students are doing that were at a similar scale score on the previous time you took a test. How much did you grow in comparison to that group, and that's uh norm reference, um. Uh we can uh review that in a few more.
Sorry, let me have questions while I'm doing.
Yeah, 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 this is definitely a discussion, yeah.
So, looking at the framework, it it's equaling to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Is it how the state weighs each category's importance?
Yes, correct.
For improvement.
Yes.
For improvement, like of what?
For you, so that, that's how Alicia, our our schools, if it does, whether or not you scroll through them or not. Is with those weighted areas, so the way our schools are evaluated and measured are within those percentages.
So it's not that the K eight students are reaching forty percent?
No.
That's that forty percent of our students.
No.
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 So when the state says, hey, these are the most important things that I'm gonna measure your school by. I'm gonna actually put most of the weighting that I measure you by as growth. And a little bit less is proficiency, and then quite a bit less as EL progress, student success. Kind of like our grade as a school is made up of fifty percent how we did our, forty percent how we did our proficiency, five percent.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
So this doesn't showcase the goal, like at our district level, this is just the way this, the state waves.
Need to. But this, but this will influence, Dana, what our school focuses on, the school improvement planning efforts. So like what Alicia mentioned, Hispanic, uh uh Latino home income, and that was, that is being identified through this weighting system.
One thing that's really positive to note is that none of our elementary schools were actually designated for EL progress, or, yeah.
No.
I don't think so, but yeah, none of our other schools were designated for the area version, good to note.
So you'll see all of our schools are. So you'll see, all of our schools are working on either proficiency or growth.
And specific categories within that.
And it just takes, and it just takes one, one of those categories to qualify you for school improvement.
Which is funny.
You get additional funding, correct.
And then um, high school, they don't do growth, right?
No, the tricky thing about growth is you need two, um, four of the same assessment, two years of growth. And it says the SWRDOX assessment, which is all proficiency and growth, it's three, eight, and then there's a break in ninth grade, and then they have a high school in tenth grade. So they'll never help grow, then take two assesses, but you can't like back and back. So they, they don't have growth.
So they've off the graduation.
Yes, yes.
And one thing we'll see too about our high schools, specifically their SBA, they won't come up in this report, though aren't on the OSPI report card, our TOS take the SBA at a very high rate. Uh, where other districts are experiencing students starting to opt out of SBA, because there's so many other ways that you can graduate. You don't need SBA to graduate, there's so many different ways. Um, but our TOS are still, you know, thankfully taking it, we don't want them to take it, we want them to show us, but you know.
Yeah, it is highly unfortunate, because if you're not taking, you don't have the opportunity to show in a book secondary that you, you're ready.
And it cuts off one of your pathways.
Absolutely, and we want to prepare all of our students for all possible pathways, not just one, and so as many doors open as possible for our TOS. Uh, yep, so um, some celebrations that I'd really like to highlight, um, so one of the reasons we don't have any schools that are turning with the EL progress is that we um, have great English and English proficiency progress with the WEDA assessment. Um, so this shows how many students actually exited the program, the English T by, TBIP programs.
We don't have to use acronyms, but yeah, good job, guys. We're, just for you to know, Casey, here are no acronym rule, so Allison, Ashley, we have a new acronym, uh, jar, so Allison actually has a dollar.
Well, the binary gave me, I was hoping there was going to be like a whole like vocabulary.
A lot of dictionary, yes, there's.
Well, I have one too, like the rest of the board, so I will get back.
There's a test. But just for example, this, this, and WEDA proficiency to exit, this is highly rigorous. We had uh, a foreign exchange student who had a private education, K ten, and did not pass this assessment as a high schooler. And he, they've been learning English since they were in kinder. Um, you're quite surprised that they start all this test, because it is, it's, it's a challenging test.
We get my new tour break, it's good.
Yeah, it is awesome, really proud of it. And it's a huge job for the last year.
Okay, so um, if you just look at proficiency data, it only tells a little bit of the story, and we like to understand hard data in context over a year. And we have data all the way back from when we first started giving um, SMARTdown assessment. Um, and you have, this is showing by grade level. Um, so you've got, you know, a third grade team, and the result, percentage of students who reached proficiency. And so you can see, since the pandemic, we had, um, it's been twenty-two, twenty-two, and then last year, twenty-six. Um, and then fourth grade, it was twenty-five, fifth grade, twenty-six. Thirty-two, so.
Though that number is, that's how many people passed the test?
So percentage of students who reached proficiency, the level three, yeah, that indicates that they're on track.
So tonight is just proficiency.
Just proficiency.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, percent, right? Percent, yeah, thank you, percent. And the reason there's that plus three next to fourth grade is we wanted to show that in spring twenty-three, when they were third graders, they were twenty-two percent, but in spring twenty-four, when they're fourth graders, they're actually twenty-five percent. So three percent more students in that particular actual group of students uh, reached that proficiency level. Making up ground, we're making up ground, which is again, what we want to see when everybody's getting to core high growth, you're going to make up ground.
Sorry, I can't keep up here, I thought this was only going to be third, eighth, and tenth grade.
Uh, no, third through eighth.
Oh, I see, okay.
It used to be.
Okay, that's.
Wow, you're taking, that's a blast from the past. You tested a lot less then.
We did, I don't, well, I wasn't.
SBA changed. Actually, NSP changed. Yes, you're right.
So we're going to look in more detail from this, but it's a huge celebration that every cohort that took it grew in ELA, and there's been a lot of work and thought and support for our students and our teachers and our schools. Um, so seventh grade, when they were sixth graders, only twenty-eight percent. Yeah, so it kind of, it goes track, it goes like that.
So you get that, you get an apple out of comparison.
Not, yeah.
Because we were not, different classes have different dynamics than before from charity doors.
Absolutely, and this should, it looks like it should be ten, but actually when they were eighth graders, that was two years ago, so eighth grader, oh, nice, gonna take it, ten. No, it wasn't. And yeah, if you just look from the pandemic, we've just been really doing great. Um, for ELA. Um, science, walk half deck data, I've been monitoring this very, very closely, because we just have our first year, this was after one year of implementation of our new science curriculum. And usually, after you implement a curriculum, you see a little bit of a dip, as teachers are getting used to a new curriculum, but we didn't. We saw growth in every grade level, that's okay. So that was a huge celebration, and I'm really excited about it. Um, so I want to get in a little bit to the actual dynamics of the test and what it looks like, so um, the SMARTdown assessment, even though we say ELA, English and Art, Math, it actually has four components, so there's um, each ELA and math has a computer adaptive test, which is like multiple choice questions. Um, I'm going to show you some examples, not all multiple choice, um, but, but they're just, you know, blessing from um, here. The performance task uh, is a, a broader scenario that they take, and they have to answer lots of questions related to that broader scenario, and it's sources and information. Um, and so they have both the computer adaptive, and the reason for computer adaptive is it, it'll give you easier or harder questions based on how you answer the earlier questions. So if you answer really easy questions not well, then you'll continue doing easy questions. Um, so, and then you have a chance of getting a higher score. Um, and so for ELA, the computer adaptive, which we call the chat, is ninety minutes across the grade levels, and in the high school, it takes about two hours to take just that section. The performance task takes two hours at every grade level. Math, computer adaptive takes about ninety minutes in the earlier grades, and two hours later, the performance task math takes another hour, so you type those out. And then if your grade level that takes the science, which is five, eight, and eleven, actually, that's another two, two hours. So just in the spring, if you think about an individual student and about how long they take, it's not time, so they can take actually as long as they want, they want to do. It's, they need a lot of testing in the spring that our students, and this is all required, and you have no control.
Is it broken up over?
Yeah. All of these would be on a separate day usually.
You know, and then compound this with our multilingual learners who have to take the WEDA exam, which is also a link. The exam, we start WEDA testing around the first of February, and it goes all the way through the end of March. And for some of these, the normal multilingual learners, they get maybe a, a month of rest, but between really high stakes center ice tests.
Between what?
Between the WEDA and then the SBA, so we get a month off with no assessment, and then we come back on SBA.
Yeah, and that, I mean, is really minimum, I mean, there are kids on the ELA performance task that will take like three days of long periods to do it, um, because they want to write their draft and then type their final, and uh, you'll see like the sources that they have to read, it's really extensive, so. So probably.
We do the same thing in most schools, we run out of Monday schedule basically, so that period from eight twenty till ten twenty, they're working on testing. And when it comes to the ELA performance task, we do the same thing, we really encourage our kids not to start actually typing their um, selection until the second day. Just because we want you to do all the pre-work beforehand, reading the statement, outlining and planning things out, and then start typing.
So most of our kids will take two of those periods, or three of those periods to work on.
And then we'll, we'll share this with you, but um, I've added some, an, an sample item, so the state gives us an item bank, so you can see sample items. And um, click on this ELA sample item here, and students have to know how to navigate this system, not just answer a simple question. So yeah, we have to teach students, and it looks like this, that you have to, this is, this is the student directions. This is the astronaut's narrative performance task, your task, and it gives you a scenario, it gives you two sources, and it says, hey, read these sources really carefully, so then you can write a story related to these sources. So this is sourced one, it explains it, and then it gives the full source, one's an astronaut, which is astronaut in space, and it, it, um, you know, pretty in-depth reading. This is one source, and.
What grade level was this one?
Uh, you, I mean, I'm going to, have you guess here in a minute. This is source two, so life in space, another source, completely different story. And they read that, and then they come over here, and the directions are for, now use your notes on these two sources to plan, draft, revise, and edit a story, narrative story. Read your assignment and information about how your story will be scored, the meaning of your work. Your assignment is to create, your path is creating a book of stories about space, for this project, you decide that to write a story about astronaut. Your story tells about an adventure that happens to a character who's an astronaut traveling space, your story will be read by characters, teachers, and other students. Writers often do research to add realistic detail to the study's characters' plots and their stories. When writing your story, find ways to do information and details from the two sources to improve your story about the astronaut adventure. Make sure you develop your characters and setting down the plot, use detailed dialogue and description when, where appropriate. And then it tells you what the components of a well-written story are, ready to begin, and this is your, you have to type it in here. And that's it, that's the, that's that one prompt, so.
That's important.
Some of them you have to, where you got things in.
Now when you have.
Yeah, you, you should, yeah, you should cite, uh, it's part of the score, is that you, you cite your sources. So guess, any guesses on in the room, at which grade level this might be?
That's good.
Sixth grade, eighth grade?
Dude, I'm hoping for ten, but it's going to be like third grade or something like that.
What would your final answer to that?
Actually, no.
Lock it in.
I'm gonna say fourth grade.
I think it's fourth grade.
Last, 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 last.
Rita, I say five.
Okay. Six. So this is a grade three. This is just the writing response, it's actually an easy prompt, they say. And also, and then they get, this is how you would score the.
So. And that's just one sample, so a lot of the time they'll give them like informational sources and then ask a kid to write a narrative, like write a story.
Well, this is.
It felt like there's, or, or, you know, they'll have different sources and now write an opinion piece or whatever, but, and you cannot answer, get any questions that the kids have to.
Are they allowed to use sources outside of what they've been provided?
They must use these two sources, they don't get any support on this either, right? So they read it themselves, they have to understand what all those words mean, and then how to pull, I mean, some kids, how they have to pull.
Pull their data from it.
Well, the fact that this acting too is, we've been teaching that all year, is, you know, our, our, our elementary, have you been into our elementary classrooms too, they're so biting and warm? And then for the assessment, you gotta take it all down or cover it all up, so they just watch into this, you know, there's some sources that they've been using. You know, they practice that.
They do practice, third grade makes it, because I remember my kid over in third grade last year, and he was talking about how he had to write.
They do a lot of that.
And they do practice.
Would you imagine, as if your English, if your language is not English at home, and you're learning English, and this is what you're navigating?
And nobody splits with those, those multilingual learners?
Cannot know.
And that, that's, a student who's a newcomer, um, they have one year.
One year.
One year.
Just for ELA, though.
So on one given test, that's just one time, just one scenario like this, or is there multiple?
No, this, this would be about what the performance task is, however, before this, there is a broader performance task, so um, this is something where you can see, like in the assessment, oh, I'll probably try, get this to go on the, next slide again. Um, you can look at the, in the assessment viewing app, and actually I put a link in here where you can see um, some of these items as well, but like for third grade, there's lots of different types of practices, but the performance task, let's see. You're, um, okay, so let's feel it, well, that's the, maybe, there's lots of things for teachers to navigate too.
Oh, the teacher can go on here and, and practice.
Yeah, they do practice, and they do like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, actually, I'm going to show you, because it's really simple, um, the tenth grade, um, so like if you, you the performance task.
Sorry.
Are you just petting me?
I'm shocked, I'm just like.
Actually, also, just the navigation of two screens and piping is a huge challenge. Let alone how good your ELA skills are, like just your ability to enter, remember all the things they're asking you to do.
And it has to be digital. And it has to be digital, they have to type it. So by the time they're in ELA tenth grade, the high school one.
Let's use the population.
Yeah, the. Yeah, then it's more research longer and more, and there's more than, there's, I think, three or four sources. And then they have, then they have questions, so all the sources say that students are in a way, spread two examples from different sources that's important, that they, and explain how the example supports the observation, cite evidence and identify source. So that's a question within it, and then they, oh, all right, maybe a problem is not that they need load. But then it just, it asks the next question, the next part when they get the scenario, so they'll ask multiple questions, and then you'll be the scenario with the evidence. So there's um, oh, huh, that's funny, did you freeze it, because that's not showing on my screen.
Oh, it's.
Showing back here.
Yeah, it's showing back there, I turned it off the close captioning, hopefully make that one catch up.
But I don't know if that answered your question, but no, that, what, what we showed you in third grade wasn't the only thing that they do, they have to answer questions about it first. Um, so let's give you a math example.
So, before we go to math, so the, the stuff that's written, there's humans rating this, that's something, so do you, do you get any feedback, so? So you see how a, a question, an individual question from a certain student was graded, and you can look at that and say, something's off here?
Yeah, they actually, but it's not like you can protest. Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to, to know.
They get feedback. Yeah, yeah, so for your class, it'll give you feedback on each, what they call targets, it's a, it's a cluster of standards and how each student did, and then uh, you can see your class result in the writing. Uh, how many, because there's like three major areas, like organization and performance, and collaboration, and then conventions. In those three areas, you can see how your kids did in general, but you can, yeah.
Yeah, for the specific development, we'll feedback for it too, no?
Or, I mean, just knowing that like, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing the same things the person somewhere that's evaluating this is. I mean, it's just.
We're just trusting the, so yeah, the value, yes, or evaluating at the same level we might.
Subjective, there's going to be a break.
Student, you will get an individual student report, but it doesn't give you a lot of detail, it just tells you the level, the scale for. But it doesn't give you that targeted standards, but the thing that the teacher will get for their whole class, that then they can't draw up to individual students, so you can't.
Are you talking about the score?
Well, to like on the writing stuff, I mean, like that's very subjective, right, so, I mean.
Yeah, that's.
But how many states use SMARTdowns?
Quite a few, but.
Let me ask you.
I'm going to guess forty-one. Yeah, so Washington State is in the process of reminding their ELA and math standards. Um, and it'll probably be on, um, superintendent office, superintendent Rital's desk in January. And if they, we expect they will, um, pass that. And then, uh, we have like a year and a half until they're considering updating our state assessment to the new standards. Which I would hope would be a little bit different.
It's, it's now, it's now thirteen.
It's gonna be several years.
So not a lot.
Question, I don't know if I should ask, I'm gonna ask.
Go ahead.
You said SBA was optional.
No, it's not optional, we have to, we have to get it.
The students can opt out if they.
Parents, parents can opt out.
So it's optional, um, it, it.
Well, what.
It's a review of the test. So everybody who acts out.
Only from the student and the district.
Correct.
Well, what I'm thinking, I'm like, for those students, for example, just drive, then fail in any way, why subject myself to that?
And that's the choice, maybe it's. And when, when you take it, you know, depending on what year you come in, you can see your growth each year. And you can, you can see your growth, this is where the student growth percentile comes in, you can see your growth as compared than the students who had the state's score with you. So if you came in as, you know, a newcomer and you took math that first year. You, we would assume you might have a lower scale score that first year, but assuming that you would learn, you know, English and the math skill. You would be, you know, you, you have a way to see if you're on track or, you know, making high growth or typical growth or low growth compared to this. Group of students that would have the score of you as poor, so you would want to show that trajectory of growth and have a way to show that.
For those same students, um, like, let's say they just arrived, they're taking a math test, when they go and take it one year later. Is it to the grade that they left or to the one that they're in now?
They always take the grade and, the grade that they're in now.
So it's not like a delay, it's just skip, right?
Well, they would laugh, like if I came as a third grader, I'd take the third grade test, and the next year I'd take a fourth grade test.
No, in ELA, they would best be ELA.
Yeah, as a newcomer, if you didn't take the third grade, yeah, like that's you just take the fourth grade.
Okay, well, yeah.
But again, like Alison said, it's an adaptive test, so if you get multiple answers right, it will you up. Be a multiple answer wrong, it will drop you down to the scale score that you, you know, they're just easier questions. And then the writing, how you get toward on writing, that is that human, you know, uh, assessment that is that way that. So, you know, we are looking forward to the change in standards, I think, you know, I, I. You know, I think it is gonna be better. It's, it's positive, and it's gonna bring about a different assessment that we hope is more actual. You know, it's not such an autopsy report, like you see it. Oh man, you know, it's, we use it absolutely, but it's, those, those kids have already left there. We would, we like, and that was one thing with, with smart balances, the promise was that you have all these form of assessments that you can give to make adjustments along the way. And it has never looked up to that.
How long does it take to get results back?
Uh, now it's about ten days, I mean, it's really fast.
It used to be weeks.
Yeah.
You get that individual.
You get your individual student scale, but yeah, the target reports take longer.
And then this, this school, that we get that initial data, but it's not formalized until what, October?
It takes a long time.
And the growth data is still.
Not until October, yeah.
So we still haven't got growth data yet, how our students have grown in those reports yet, from say third to fourth grade, fourth.
So, um, that, an, an, an easy quote-unquote easier question, we've got the computer adaptive, this is an example from math. And if you look at this question, here, I'll just pop it up here. Five students solved the following problem, each student uses a different method, a store offers a twenty percent discount on a bicycle, the discount price of the bicycle is a hundred and two dollars. What was the original price of the bicycle? Select all of the students who use the correct method to solve for the original price of the bicycle.
That's not third grade, is it?
You fixed it, I, I agree. What, any guesses, any guesses what grade level this might be?
If it's like, if it's prices right, well, you can't go.
Okay, so this is seventh grade, and again, it's an easy question. And they're supposed to answer that it's both B, all, all three, answer B, C, and E, and if they don't get it, all three is incorrect.
In addition to the, the computer adaptive test, they also have a math performance task that goes into their score. Just like the ELA, there's a performance task and cap that give the ones score, but for math, there's the computer adaptive. And then a performance task that they have to read, understand information, and then do something.
And the math assessment is, is so language heavy.
Yeah.
So, you know, when you're thinking about math, it's not just, because of their math backs, you know, it's nowhere near that simple.
I mean, this is the high school, a high school, you can actually love a performance task. Team driving direct restrictions that give you all this background about, you know, the rules of this big team driving. Gives you different table, tables of accidents and people involved, and then it asks you these questions. So it asks you to actually really take all this data and ha- answer these questions. And what's the reasonable domain for this function within the context?
So in addition, yeah, in addition to jumping math, you have to be able to. Hold multiple step directions.
Now is it the first question?
To do all the multiple steps.
Let alone.
Get the math in them right.
And then the next question, have you look at another table and compare and make claim and justify your answer mathematically? And then the next question, have you actually used this deathmost calculator, which, can any of you guys use this? You have to know how to use it, it's take a lot of training. And then the next question is, you know, making a recommendation with a mathematical justification. And that is the performance task for our high school, is an exam. And it's hard, cause if they start with the first part and they mess it up, they all usually build on each other. So now you should mess up something in the first part, nothing as soon as you write, yeah.
So is this like a public test though?
No.
Wouldn't that be great?
That would take a whole three hours. And then you have the computer adaptive test on top of this.
And if you think after the, the problem that she showed you for those seventh graders, you know how they, they talk a lot about. Well, I don't know why we keep showing kids all these different methods to do things, you just need one method, you do it. If you only knew one method, and you had that problem, you wouldn't be able to solve it, cause you had to know different methods to get to that answer.
Yeah, gone are the days to memorize one way to solve a problem.
Yeah, I found a deeper understanding.
But which is not a bad thing for kids to understand how numbers work, that numeracy, that, that, you know, when we're thinking about math, you think about language literacy, numeracy. Those are, those are the, that's the bedrock of the way we are thinking about math, in the university school district, it really is that language and literacy. With numeracy, and you see that in these assessment questions, it's not because just, because the test tells us to do it, it's, it's good practice. But man, if, if, there's so much language, it's, it's not just a math test.
And the thing is, like, our kids can do it, and our students do show that they can, and they're capable of doing it, it's just, it's good to know.
We're seeing how difficult it is.
Yeah.
Teachers are teaching that, kids are getting it.
And they're getting better at it. They better have to react.
It will change the test. That's what happens, man, we had MSP, we were nailing MSP, we were concerned, and then all of a sudden they changed the test. But I think if we're doing numeracy, then it doesn't matter what test it is, now they have numbers sense, and they're gonna be able to do all of those skills.
We, we really want our teacher, our students to be able to think. Absolutely. Um, so if we're thinking about. If we're thinking about our ELA math data compared to some prior years, what I've done is I've averaged all of the ELA math scores over the years. And I had an average of those, and called them kind of pre-pandemic proficiency, and then I've studied every year since. You know, what proficiency levels have been, so this blue line is math proficiency. So prior to the pandemic, we were at almost thirty percent proficiency. And then during the pandemic, we went down twelve. And we have crawled up to the study nineteen, that looks different in every grade level, and we'll show you that. Um, ELA on the other hand has been a very different story. Pre-pandemic was about thirty-two percent, we had a dip during COVID, but we were actually slightly higher now than we were prior to the pandemic. So we put a lot of effort and a lot of pride in our schools for supporting especially our multi-level learners. Um, with being able to do that, it was really hard for the rest of the competition. Um, so this show the, oh, weird. Oh, there it goes. Um, this show you our ELA math data, and really any way you slice it. Our math data shows that our kids are struggling with math growth and proficiency. So if they have a lower proficiency in the grade before, it's really hard to have more students gain proficiency. Um, the one, um, kind of outlier here with our sixth grade group. They had fifteen percent as fifth graders, and then twenty-two percent as sixth graders last year, which is a huge celebration. I do wanna say that the third graders coming up, starting at twenty-eight, this is in a much better position than we have, have been. Uh, since the pandemic, but the, the way math is, is it's very, um, linear and skilled to add up. So if you're missing skills, it's a lot harder to catch up in math versus ELA. Firely and parenting skills come up, it just, it gets a little harder text, and that's easier to catch kids up. Math is, is definitely a struggle, and it's a nationwide struggle. So I wanted to give you some context, and it's exciting that twenty-three, twenty-four is the first year that we've actually able to have three years of similar data, SBA data. Um, to compare with the state, so what I did is I took our data at each intersection. And so third through fifth grade, sixth through eighth, and what happens in high school, and compared it to the state, um, data. But before I show you that, I just wanted to remind you that when we're comparing Quincy School District data and Washington State data. We have very different demographic and context, context in our district, so, um. But the way that they have started talking about this, if the student's on track for college level, and you can see the percentages in Quincy and Washington State. So ELA, math, and science, and then that second level is students showing foundational grade level or above. And the percentages of Quincy versus Washington State.
And that distinction is new this year. Prior, you know, the year, last year this time, you looked on the OSPI report card, you would just see the straight proficiency rate. You wouldn't see the student showing foundational grade, uh, grade level, that was a change that OSPI made, um, this, just recently, October.
Uh, the, the picture of the state with the different shades of blue.
Oh, the meaning, it's just showing that they're different.
So, I'm sorry, that's a new term, foundational grade level.
That's new.
Which means growth?
No, I'm not a level two.
Now, it's your level two, it's a level two, three, or four, you're almost being standard, but you, you know enough, you have enough foundational literacy skills to read the test. I, we would not use the SBA to measure literacy foundation. We use DIBELS, we use, uh, there's some other fluency assessments that we use, we wouldn't use the SPA, the SPA. But we just wanna show that the state is now breaking this apart.
Foundational grade level knowledge or skills, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, they got rid of the students on track for college level and replacing it with foundational.
This shows up, I just kind of wanted to show you that the distinction, so there's two, two levels that now show up on the OSPI report card. If I just, if I just pull up the OSPI report card, it would look like you would see these, like, on how we showed, just like that.
So, oh. Here, let me, I don't understand what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah.
So when the test is done on four, like a four-point scale, a one wouldn't be in this at all. Cause a one is like, you're so far behind, so you're not approaching, and two says they're approaching standard, which means they have this foundational part. They could, they, they're functioning okay in the classroom, they're able to do the work. A three says that kid is on track to go to college, like right out of high school, like they've got it, they passed it, they're good. And then a four would be in there too, so this foundational is that level two in there. You're getting close to the standard, what they want us to do, but you're not there yet.
They give it to us in a percentage, they're not giving it to us in a one.
So that would count, that fifty-nine percent data is all the twos, threes, and fours.
So fifty-nine point seven percent of our students are.
Third through ten are, are two, three, or four, so at that foundational level, they can navigate classroom just fine. Like Sunshine said, that was a really good example, that doesn't include our ones.
They shouldn't write that out.
You really should.
Yeah, they really should.
Kind of like, if you guys aren't here to explain that, there's just no way.
What does it mean, right? And then my task, like what we were saying, there's other ways that we measure foundational skills in the district. We wouldn't rely on the SBA necessarily solely to assess foundational skills.
Oh, sorry, one last question on my screen. All of our percentages are lower than the state. Except for our graduation.
Yeah.
What?
We have our remarkable CTE program at our high school, it is like a crown jewel of our state. And one of the graduation pathways of CTE, we have, um, a lot of ways for our students to access a pathway that's not set met. So.
Okay, but then are we skirt tailing the need to know more ELA, math, and science?
No, but we are preparing our students with a really rigorous CTE pathway, which is, uh, we need to graduate to. Yeah, exactly.
Especially in our area that we need more tradesmen. And, and they still have to pass our ELA course classes too. And there are students that can fully function and pass their English classes, but they might be a level two on the SBA, cause it is very challenging. So that's, that, and I, and I did in all those English classes, there's kiddos in our college and the high school class that, that might not pass the SBA. But they'll, they'll get college credit because they can still take the time and, and study.
Really, this is more of a justification of what, how inaccurate the test scores are in how successful our students can be. Like, as far, like, we are, we are not determining, uh, their success on their test scores, and if they can't still succeed.
A thousand percent.
Like, right? But that.
Not just that test score.
Right, I guess, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, cause they're still assessed, and they're still, and the graduation, our graduation rate is based on art. It's based on PE, it's based on all the CTE and elective classes, it's not based on just. An ELA test or math test, but they still have to pass.
Lower percentages are.
Correct. But that is why the state recognized that and then created more pathways for this purpose. They said, okay, we're, we're done with just this one pathway, here are these other seven that we can. And, and one, one adjustment that a lot of schools did when SBA came out hard and heavy, and that was the only way. Is guess what programs got mainly impacted the most in, at a high school level? What do you think they started dropping? Arts, music, uh, CTE took a dive, where a lot of, yeah, because if I'm gonna remediate that kid. I'm gonna put them in, rather than put them in a hands-on CTE class, I'm gonna put them in a sixty-minute, I'm giving, I, I'm gonna give them E, English twice a day. So, so you took out CTE, Quincy is one school district, we continued, and the community continued to invest in CTE. And now it's really paying off, so you see our graduation rates at a higher level, because we've continued to see the value in CTE and how life-changing it is for our kids. So I would say that's the biggest difference, why you see that higher rate, because we know that college isn't for everybody. It just really isn't, and, and that doesn't mean that not everybody shouldn't have the opportunity to go to college if there's some chance. But we also know that people are gonna choose other things too, so we really worked hard, and you know, the board and you guys have been so, we really appreciate how supportive you guys have been on CTE.
Yeah, and the, the one test route, for students with disabilities, they would try it, and try it, and try it, and try it. And then it was like, well, I'm eighteen, I'm not gonna pass this test, I'll just drop out. Now we've given them a pathway where we're like, you can graduate by taking the CTE classes and getting the skills that you need.
And the state allows us other.
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Okay.
Thank you for servicing that.
Yeah, that's great. Um, so I just wanted to point out, when we are looking at state versus, you know, Quincy, we, we just have really different enrollment on the state. So for multi-level learners, we're on with that forty-three percent of our students are actively multi-level learners, whereas the state is fourteen. So again, you look at that, language dense. So again, you look at that language dense assessment, how you have to navigate that, all the vocabulary in language to pass. You're, it's going to be a lot harder for you if English is not your first language. Another um, indicator that um, is disproportionately lower scores on the smarter balance is uh, low income. Versus higher income families. And you know, we are at almost eighty percent here versus the state at fifty percent. So if you look at the disproportionality in ELA math and science on Quincy and they were pretty similar. And you'll, whether you're, you know, if English was your first language and you come from a really high income family. Both at the state and in Quincy, your percentage of um, being able to pass that really rigorous language dense test is higher. So when you look at our overall results, you, you need to really think about what we're comparing here when you're comparing the district. And our state first with what we're doing here at Quincy. And then any questions? I have a lot of questions to slide back. That means that. Okay, so in this section, what I wanted to show you is like third through fifth grade math. Um, and ELA, what we, the of our proficiency versus the state proficiency. And what do you notice? So the state is purple, the blue is Quincy.
We're counting at the same rate as well.
Exactly. So it, our current, our last year's fifth graders from third, fourth and fifth grade, they sho- showed about the same amount of growth in math. Even though our math scores looked like they were way down in proficiency, so did everybody else in the state. So our multilingual learners, really similar results. So if you compare multilingual learners in the district and multilingual learners in the state, we do see a very similar trend line. Um, and so if you compare, this is so fascinating, I was trying to talk into this, but. If you look at third to fifth grade growth, it was actually an eight percent change backwards of eight percent of kids are less proficient in that grade level. In, but that's the same in Washington State, QSD, Washington multilingual learners, QSD multilingual learners. It was universal that all goes through this. They all went down.
Every group.
The third grade and fifth grade tests in math are very different. They're very different. It's a lot harder, the grade test is a lot harder than the third grade test. So um, that just kind of proves actually that it's not just the cohort of kids or, you know, the teacher or. It's just a, it's a different test. Um, I don't know if you have any questions, but. For ELA, you'll see really similar trend lines. Again, this is third through fifth grade. And then our multilingual learners, you'll see it, we have the state for ELA, we're real, really close to the state for multilingual learners. In fact, we're almost caught up. Um, so if you actually look at ELA grade through five, Washington State from third to fifth grade test, they have four percent more proficient. And QSD, we have five percent more proficient. And the multilingual learners from state, they actually went backwards one percent, where we went four and eight percent. Amazing. Which is amazing. That's going to see the definition of our teachers.
That's, that's awesome. The, the graphic, like, Washington, fifty three percent of fifth graders proficient.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So much change.
Yeah. Um, so math, six to eight math is a little bit different story. If we look at the average scale four, you can see six to sixth grade, you're a little bit closer and there was a little bit of a gap, seventh and eighth. For our multilingual learners, our sixth grade team did such an awesome job, multilingual learners actually better than the state. And then they went to that in seventh and eighth grade. So this will be the one area that you see that we're not performing as well in the state with the change in from sixth to eighth grade. Which makes sense because we see how language rich those math stuffs and pieces are. And we have such a higher percentage of students are multilingual learners. And unfortunately, if you look at the particular cohort, only three percent of our MLs passed in the sixth grade. And then only had one percent. So um, yeah.
Do we, are multilingual students during that time? Did we get?
No.
Wrong, correct. But I don't think that's what's it should be.
I don't think that's what it is. I think it's just a really hard test for them.
We just didn't have, that's not where the largest percent of kiddos there. Foundation for language and social.
Yeah.
It's, it gets like.
The test gets hard.
You know, I don't know. I also believe for this, we'll talk about it more this year, but I'm really excited about some of the really intentional work that's taking place in math. And multilingual learners this year. So our teachers and Allison, Victoria are making some amazing work.
And Sunshine.
And Sunshine, yeah, sorry, Sunshine, yeah, sorry.
Critical partner.
Yes, and Sunshine as well.
Yeah. Uh, ELA six to eight, you can see the trend line there. Our multilingual learner is actually performing better than the state in some degree. And so if you see Washington State, sixth to eighth grade for ELA, it was four percent. We actually went up seven percent. Multilingual was up two, we beat them a little bit, three percent. So that's really exciting for our middle school ELA. Um, our, our high school math, um, you can see very, very similar trend lines from this week and then. I'm, and sorry, Quincy, um, when you look at, I mean, it's pretty negligible difference. Unfortunately, the rates are so low for camping, you know, again, for our multilingual residents of Euro and that was similar to Washington. Um, and again, very negligible, Washington State between eighth and tenth grade, they, they went, they went upwards too, just a little bit, just like that.
No wonder they wanted to change.
Well, yeah, I'd say if everyone's failing the test.
Figuring it out, right.
Maybe it's not a good.
I know, I know, I was, when I was a teacher, if my students failed my test, it wasn't their fault.
No.
I, I, I really, really bad test.
Maybe stick your charger in a.
So, yeah.
I think they are, so then that's a close.
Was that test?
Could be me.
Um, ELA.
You always like, I'm ready for that, all right. Take care of it.
So ELA trajectory, and this is so exciting, but if you look at our multilingual learners, the other little cross there, um, so. Our multilingual learners are amazingly bilingual, super narrow. I am incredible. I am so proud of our students and our teachers that I pulled them in to do this. But like in Washington State, they went up fourteen percent and Quincy went up twenty two percent for eighth and tenth grade. And then for our multilingual learners, seven percent for state, and then we doubled that uh, at fourteen percent. So this is a huge celebration for our community, our, our students.
And the high schools just do.
They appreciate it. It's amazing work. So we will get, everything, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to just like give one shout out to middle school because when you do look at their data proficiency levels, they are the closest to the state.
Oh, yeah.
And proficiency.
Right.
So there was that growth, but their numbers and efficiency are way closer to measures.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Scott, Scott will be that cop writer.
Yeah.
She also turned your, your charger.
Is that your charger? Is that your charger?
No.
That charger was under the seat.
Oh, no, that wasn't mine. Oh, that was there.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't.
I'll take it.
I was thinking, I was gonna bring this on, please.
So um, if you, if you look at, you know, the state, you know, data and math, we've been pretty negligible difference. We definitely have some really great celebrations with our ninth graders are coming in ten percent higher, more proficiency than our last year's cohort at each time. So I'm really feeling very positive and excited about that. For instance, ELA is positive across the board group. We had four percent gain on state, all students ten, five percent on ML. Um, so I'm feeling really um, very proud of the work that we're doing. Um, so kind of opening up for your discussion, what are you noticing about um, this data? Um, how do your perspective, what, you know, what perspective of the comparison cohort data give you? Or know a little bit more about the start of that question. Any questions you can bring up?
Need that as the clear picture.
I don't know, I don't think it's very clear. That was very complicated.
Yeah.
It's very complicated.
Complicated.
I, I, I mean, I work in performance improvement and that was so difficult to try to follow. And I'm just trying to figure out, sadly, the, the ones who pay the price are the kids who feel like they're dumb or something.
Yeah.
Actually has nothing to do with that. This is a very complicated test.
It is.
Um, I don't think it all showcases the teachers' efforts. Um, and so it, it's really disappointing, um, that that's the way that the state is choosing to report on our progress. Um, yeah.
Dan, I kind of think that's, that's why we focus so much on growth. Because that growth from maybe for our kiddos, that's where we can really see that hard work of the, of the, of our students and our teachers. I mean, you know, just a personal example for uh, my own son, he was every year two, 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 two. And then, and he's not a multilingual learner, but he still grew. So it wasn't us coming at him, like, you're not good enough, you're not smart enough, but you're showing growth, bud, and you're making your goals. And then something quite seventh grade year, three, he had his first three, I was thinking, oh, way to go. And then eighth grade year, like, you know, you saw some of that proficiency data, part of that, the four. But it took him from third grade to um.
Yeah.
Does everybody know what that form looks like here? The, what you're talking about, the one, two, three, four, the sheet that is given out, like, you look at it.
I don't know about this board now.
Well, I mean, I, I see it with my kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, we valid them all.
Cause I mean, I don't know if that's something for.
Yeah, you could see, I'll be that.
Example.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's one of the things we're, we're really focused on growth because we know that sustained goal setting and that you are good enough. Um, and you're working hard. Um, and here's some areas that you really need to focus on, that is, you're on the hook for your learning. Because it's a hard task, you're absolutely on the hook. And the teachers on the hook, and I'm on the hook, and administrators, we're all on the hook for this. But we really celebrate um, the growth of our kiddos. Because you're right, Dana, proficiency, it's, it's, it tells such a deficit picture of what's really happening. Um, you know, as a teacher, when Mossel first came out, when they used this air by standard space. Um, assessment as a graduation requirement, I'll never forget coming out from high school, one of my students who did, was it, I had a lot of writing in my class. He was a really good writer, but he failed the writing by two points and he was curling ball, writing, sobbing. And right then, I'm like, this is, this high stakes, serious testing is, is not good for kids, it's not good for teachers. Do we have to do it? Yes. This data has started to recognize that. And that's why you're starting to see these other pathways, because it doesn't show a complete picture of kiddo potential.
I mean, some questions that it does draw, I, if the state is going to be weighing this at thirty, forty percent and proficiency is still critical.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so I'm just thinking, just what are, what are ways that we can help support that? Um, I, I just keep going back to the idea of tutoring, um, support. It's really challenging for parents to try to hold with this kind of stuff. Because it's such a higher level than what we were expecting. Yeah, so it's just like. You're going to need support and it's going to have to be outside of the regular school hours. That's just a reality of it. Um, and so that's kind of the question that I have where I see now, definitely the state is still going to prioritize proficiency now that there's a gap. Now how do we help fill in?
Sure. It is a blessing because, I mean, like Nick was saying, when it first came out, even this test, when it first came out, it was only about proficiency. And growth didn't matter. And I think there was finally enough, but what about our growth and what does it say about our kids? That they finally added that aspect in there and that was part of it.
Don't worry about all those other skills that we expect our kids to graduate with, you know? We're not just putting out math and, and ELA bots in the world. You know, we also want to teach character. We also want to teach other skills. We want them to experience different contents. You know, this doesn't mean ELA is not important, those skills are all transferable. But we still, it's, there's, there's starting to be a more holistic way to look at kids. Um, and I think that's, that's really important. But I, you know, and I, I think back to your point too, Dana, to after school, you know, that's part of the conversation that we start having with the city.
Well, I don't know if it's a city issue, to be honest. Um, it, it really is a community issue, definitely, but I don't know if it's necessarily a responsibility.
No, but they're, they've been good partner.
Yeah.
I hope that we can start.
They have the most readiness to help um, support it, but I don't know.
Yeah.
If that's necessary. I, I've worked in that program and I'm like, they have a very high emphasis on physical activity. Which obviously chronic illnesses do playable or just child's education. But it, I, I'm talking about tutoring, actual.
ALI is doing some math tutoring this year. So that, that can be a really good test pilot to see if it works and scale out some of our other schools.
Now, thank you.
Oh, not much to thank you. So, yeah, we do have two schools doing after school programs.
But they're improving.
And it's turning just now.
Is there less funding coming into schools for after school tutoring?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
In fact, the last big uh, after school tutoring grant, like you know, talked about twenty first century, only one school district got it, it was Pasco School District. And hundreds, I mean, not hundreds, but good chunk of schools, we even applied for it and we have a really strong application, felt good about it, but it didn't get part.
Well, then, yeah, there's also taking into, you know, consideration to the kids. That are, you know, they're in school for six or seven hours a day, eight years old, like their graders are eight, you know? And so I think you have to weigh both sides.
I mean, there's still a little gap that most parents don't get home until after five anyway, so they do have that window to play and maybe catch.
That paper is important too, especially kids. That's kind of my, my move to city too, is, you know.
Sorry.
No, no.
I guess to that point, am I wanting my, as a mom, am I wanting my kids to sit down and tutor for two more hours every day? For the sake of passing a state mandated test? Like, I don't care whether my kids bring our district numbers up higher, right? Like as a parent, I wouldn't, if, if we're on track to graduate, if they're getting AIDS, if they are, uh, you know, we, we have hope for our future. And then I don't want my kids to, just for the sake of being able to say, oh, better test score.
Go ahead. It's a question of what they're not doing, right? So for some families, it's going to be a better choice than for other families. It would be a good choice based on what the kids' needs are and what would they be doing during that time if it wasn't in a state provided environment working.
Yeah, at this stage, well, I would say we're looking at universal approaches that affect the whole district. Absolutely. I, I love opportunity for each parent to own their child education journey, um. Uh, but definitely for the families that could benefit, I, I'm just thinking about the few that, man, they're getting these little test scores. And man, they really sadly walk with a hat, a dummy, as if that's all they are. So then they invest all their time and energy into great things like soccer, for example. But I'm like, you're so much more than soccer, you're so much more than whatever you're doing with that group, you see what I'm saying? Uh, so, so I'm just trying to think of alternative ways to give others um, opportunities.
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. This is very interesting data. I really appreciate you guys taking the time.
Yeah, that's a lot of work. Well done.
Well complicated, but I've had a lot of misunderstandings on it, so this, this is very exciting.
Yeah, we're not, we're not making widgets, you know, it's really challenging. And I'm just really proud of the team, you know, that, and all of our principals that are here, they, they all take it in close here. I mean, they're, they're very dedicated to results. Um, so, and I think that would fly us out, so thank you guys.
And just think, but the time it took us as a bunch of adults to go through forty three kind of complicated slide is still way less than what our kids are taking on.
So.
Oh, yeah.